These guys out there working on their citizenship in the community.
Interesting meeting.
Should I recognize them?
Wait, my light's not on.
Good evening.
I don't know.
Welcome to the February 11th, 2020 Lawrence City Commission meeting. Want to acknowledge we have some Boy Scouts in the room learning about citizenship. So that's pretty exciting. Welcome. I hope that, um, I hope they learn a lot this evening. Uh, we will start by approving the agenda. The City Commission reserves the right to amend, supplement, and reorder the agenda during the meeting. Does anybody have any recommended changes for the agenda?
No.
Move to approve the agenda.
Oh, I, I do.
You did.
Um, I would like to request, since Porter is the one presenting on the cultural plan, that we move that to item number three. I know that it will be a brief presentation, but since he's here throughout the entire meeting, moving that to number three rather than number one might, um, help us move through the other items.
Works fine.
Okay.
With that amendment, I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bulleye, second by Commissioner Larson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, passes unanimously. We will move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed below on the consent agenda are considered under one motion and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on those items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Members of the public wishing to speak to an item that has been pulled off the consent agenda will be limited three minutes for comments. Are there any items that a member of the commission would like to pull from the consent agenda?
Nope.
Any items that a member of the public would like to pull from the consent agenda? Okay, do we have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Motion by Vice Mayor Finkelde, second by Commissioner Shipley. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. So we will move on to public comment. The public is allowed to speak to any items or issues except those scheduled on the consent agenda or regular agenda portions of the agenda after first being recognized by the mayor. Each person will be limited to three minutes for public comment. As a general practice, the commission will not discuss or debate these items, nor will the commission make decisions on items presented during this time. Rather, they will refer the items to staff for follow-up if necessary. Individuals are asked to come to the microphone, sign in, and state their name and address. Speakers should address all comments and questions to the commission. I will also note that all of the items on the study session, um, are, are not, not going to fall under general public comment because they are specifically on the agenda. That includes any of the, um, issues around immigration or houselessness. Um, I also want to add something that I brought up at the last meeting, which is, please do not engage in audible response to public comment to ensure that everyone in the audience can hear. Public comment is directed toward the commission to inform discussion on a given topic. Residents who are engaging in public comment, regardless of whether we agree or disagree with their statements, should feel safe accessing this building and the podium. Not engaging in audible response to public comment will support safe access to the commission. So with that, is there any public comment on items not on the agenda?
Yes.
Come on up.
I have a target. My name is Ron Woods. I live at 627 Noah, 750 Road. When you tell a lie or allow others to get away with a lie, I believe you lose your honor, self-respect, respect of others, and ability to trust, and their ability to trust you. If you allow your child to steal cookies, lie, sell you a mood stabilizer, you'll have consequences. Well, that person grew up to lie, steal, use drugs, be a bully, and worse, become a killer because it has no sense of responsibility. The present mayor's an incident, it's action. My threat, black cop, gets only a statement that will be looked into. For months, there is no investigation. You were responsible for your words and actions, not ours. Why would a mayor choose to tell a lie to me and the public and reward a cop for his irresponsibility? I do have a simple request. It is that the cop and his bullies killed my wife first so she does not watch me die and get atrocities that that cop will commit on my body. You have a rogue cop that is in a jail. You had months to fix this problem. Are you showing him in the public how much you don't care about his safety and our safety? Our words say that this is not the Lawrence that we love. What do your actions tell us? Are you willing, are you allowing a soul in the good name of Lawrence go to hell? You are elected to represent us. Are we a bunch of liars? Do you respect us and can we respect you? I don't give a darn about myself as I have already died twice. I do care about my wife.
Other general public comment?
I'm Chris Flowers, Congressman Wiltshire. Last week, Republicans voted for Trump's acquittal instead of impeachment. Part of the argument for some is that even if quid pro, if quid pro quo happened, it isn't an impeachable offense. It's a sad day in America when you have a president taking a victory lap over the fact that the majority of the senate doesn't think quid pro quo is an impeachable offense. But what does this have to do with Lawrence, you might be asking yourselves? We can't do anything locally, to which I would say we can do something locally. We, as a town, could voice our displeasure to the a-holes in Washington. How do we do this? By sending Trump a lock to the city. For those that are new, a lock to the city is basically the opposite of a key to the city. A key to the city is a giant prop key a city awards someone for being a great citizen and represents that the person is welcomed anytime to the city. A lock to the city would be a giant prop lock that can't be opened, symbolizing the recipient is not welcomed here and should stay out of town because their mere presence is that harmful. If a city can give out a, a key to the city, then I would say we should be allowed to send out locks, especially to politicians that make rules that those of us in Lawrence do not want. Case in point, tonight's meeting about cooperating with ICE. Due to Trump's bigotry, the city of Lawrence is now having to set out how not to go along with the federal government. I would argue that sending Trump a lock to the city would not only be good for the morale of Lawrence citizens, but also good for the city's reputation. We could become known as the city that takes a stand against corrupt, horrible politicians. Wouldn't that sort of reputation be good when trying to get young people, to choose KU or Haskell as their choice for college? Couldn't that reputation help us get musical acts of artists to make Lawrence stop on their tours? I think, I think it could. That's why I put down sending Trump a lock to the city on the Lawrence Listen survey for this strategic plan 2020. Now that the idea is out in the public consciousness, I'm hoping everyone here puts down, send Trump a lock to the city under things the city currently doesn't do, but you would like to see them doing within the next 10 years on Lawrence Listens. Seriously, everyone here should fill out the Lawrence Listen survey for the 2020 strategic plan and put down, send Trump a lock to the city. If enough people do it, it could easily become the number one issue for the 2020 strategic plan. Then when the commission, be forced to at least look at the idea. So just everyone should be aware of that. You can go to the city's webpage, go to Lawrence Listens, and fill, fill out the strategic plan 2020. Thank you.
Other general public comment? Okay, we will move on to commission items. Um, you've already given public comments, sir. Thank you. Are there any future, sir?
The public is allowed to speak on.
Correct, you may speak one time during public comment. You have three minutes. Thank you, Ron. We will move on to commission items. Are there any future agenda items? Oh, I'm sorry, were you coming up to give public comment? Please do.
Does she know what?
Hey, good evening. I'm Lisa Stilwell, and I am, since December 15th, I've been the coordinator of the Lawrence Winter shelter.
Are you, are you here to, are you talking about issues on the homelessness? Okay, yeah, we will be discussing that in our, um, study session. So on that topic, we will wait until the study session. Thank you. All right, any other general public comment? Okay, we'll try this again. We'll move on to commission items. Are there any future agenda items to add?
Uh, Mayor, I, I think I did mention to you personally and, and, and the city manager that the, um, Greek delegation for the sister cities will be here on April 17th, I believe. And I just wanted to be sure that was added to the calendar and that, um, whatever formalities there are.
April 14th.
14th, sorry, 14th.
That's a calendar, that's a calendar item?
I just, I don't know, because I'm new. Does that, as a, as a formality, as a declaration or in those things, could you tell me how that?
Well, you're our sister city rep.
That's why I'm telling you, they're gonna be here.
Bringing this to our attention during commission items is entirely appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So I think, you know, it depends on what they want to do. When we had Oiteen in town, um, they came to a meeting and we gave them recognition and they came up here and we took a picture. Um, we've had other instances in which, you know, we've recognized them through, uh, the proclamation section. Um, but we've had other instances in which, you know, it was, um, me and Craig, I think, um, just upstairs greeting the new students. So I would say if there's something specific that they would like to see happen, um, then definitely bring that back, uh, and we can kind of go from there.
I, I guess I'm really interested in what kind of opportunities there are for the citizens to get to meet them. I mean, I think that's a really important, you know, for us to be able to get that information out.
Yeah, Porter's the one that has been coordinating all that, and so he would be a really good contact for how they line it out. But yeah.
And to add to that, the sister cities group is meeting tomorrow night and they're working on the overall itinerary. So I'll, I'll mention that you guys talked about this and we'll start figuring out how they want to handle this. Thanks for bringing it up.
Thank you, commissioners.
Yeah, that's great.
Thank you. Any other, um, future agenda items? Future work session items? Other items?
I did want to remark on the, I think we all got an email about the between a rock and a hard place. Um, I think everyone got something about that. It was about the big red rock, the Chunginoga stone, uh, that's over here. It's in a county park, but we take care of the park. Um, and there's been, I did go to some of that meeting. Um, and hopefully, just in the future, I hope we have some dialogue here and they come and make a presentation here. And they're gonna approach us each individually, but I think as a, um, community discussion, it's gonna be really important addressing, um, all kinds of historical issues, racial issues, um, and I'm really excited that they're approaching us with this and also looking at it from an artistic perspective, which I think is also very interesting for Lawrence.
Yeah, absolutely, and I think that we probably will have an opportunity to have that on an agenda at some point as a discussion. So thanks for bringing that up as well. Anything else? All right, we'll move on to the calendar. Anything on the calendar? All right. Um, so at this point, we are ready to, um, the way that this will work, and I will say this for the public's benefit, is that, um, we do have an executive session on our agenda, which is set for 15 minutes. We're not able to move that to after the study session because we do adjourn to enter into the study session. Um, so we will have the motion to recess into executive session, and that is for 15 minutes. If it needs to be extended, we will come back and do that. Um, and then we will adjourn the meeting after the executive session and return to take up the work session. So with that said, um, does someone want to read the entire action to make the motion for the executive session?
I move we recess into executive session for approximately 15 minutes to discuss privileged legal communications from the city's attorneys regarding a potential lawsuit and pending litigation pursuant to KSA 754319B2. The justification for the executive session is to keep attorney-client privileged matters confidential at this time. At the end of the executive session, the city commission will resume its regular meeting in the city commission room.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Bulleye, second by Commissioner Larson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we will be back in 15 minutes.
All right, we are back in session and we have nothing to report. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bulleye, second by Commissioner Larson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, passes unanimously. Now we will move on to our work session. The work session provides an opportunity for the City Commission to discuss items in greater detail. As a general practice, the Commission will not make decisions on items presented during this time. Rather, they will refer the items to staff for follow-up if necessary. Public comment related to the work sessions topics will be allowed at the end of the discussion on each item. Each person will be limited to three minutes for public comment. We have moved item one to item number three, so we will begin with, "Receive an update from staff on progress related to drafting a document codifying city policies and practices concerning immigrants and direct staff as appropriate."
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Assistant City Attorney Maria Garcia, and I am here to provide that update for you this evening. Just get my PowerPoint open. I'd like to begin with a roadmap of what I'll be discussing during this presentation. First, I'll review the discussion that we had on November 12th, 2019 on this very topic. At that time, staff presented a draft policy. The Commission provided some comments, some feedback, and based on that feedback, we've returned with the ordinance that is in front of you tonight. Number two, I'd like to briefly review key provisions from that draft ordinance. After that, I'll discuss next steps. And then lastly, we'll receive an update from the police chief, who posted and provided a draft copy of the administrative policy for the Police Department related to this topic. So with that, I'll start with the November 12th, 2019 discussion. We met here on that date, and the consensus of the Commission at that time was to continue working on draft policies while staying within legal boundaries. And number two, there was a request for staff to consider the remaining requests from Sanctuary Alliance, and determine whether they could be incorporated in some form. If you'll recall, staff provided you with a scorecard last time where we went over all of the requests that Sanctuary Alliance made, and compared it to what staff was able to adopt in the draft policy at the time. I have a new scorecard that's been updated based on our conversations since that time. So I'll next briefly review the specific provisions of the ordinance. And I'll note that previously in November, the draft was a policy, but at this time, it is a draft ordinance. And so if the consensus is that the language looks good, staff plans on returning that for a formal vote at a later date. So the ordinance begins with Section 10-1001, and that is just the general findings of the governing body. This language was crafted, inspiration was taken from the City Commission's proclamation in 2015, and again in 2017 when it declared Lawrence a welcoming city. So that's kind of where this language comes from, that Lawrence is an inclusive community that values immigrants, and that all people should be accepted and able to access city services regardless of their immigration status. That section does end by saying, "It is the intent of the city to comply with local, state, and federal laws, while strongly discouraging unlawful discrimination and fostering a welcoming and safe environment for all individuals." I'll skip ahead to Section 1003, which really is kind of the meat of this ordinance. It talks about the provision of city services. This section applies to all departments, all employees of the city, and so it's broadly written to include every department, every employee. So it begins by saying that no employee shall collect immigration-related information in the provision of city services, including policing, unless otherwise required by law, regulations, or state and federal policies. There is an exception for helping victims or witnesses of crimes for purposes of them obtaining a U visa or a T visa, which allows somebody who is undocumented to stay in the United States longer so that they can testify in court if they are a victim or a witness. And the Police Department plays a role in helping people understand that process. They might let them know what it is. Ultimately, it's the federal government that grants those visas, but the Police Department does offer some information to people who are interested in it. Secondly, the ordinance prohibits an employee from discriminating on the basis of alienage or immigration status. Employees and departments that require individuals to provide identification shall accept any valid photo identification that provides the person's name and photo. And the ordinance lists a number of examples, including student IDs, passports issued by foreign governments, driver's license, of course, by foreign governments as well. Any service, benefit, or opportunity provided by a city of Lawrence Department shall be made available to all persons residing in the city, regardless of immigration status unless otherwise required by law. And there is a requirement for language services when possible to increase access to those city services. And then finally, enforcement, there's a statement that states enforcement of federal immigration laws is a matter that falls under federal jurisdiction and as such is outside the scope of duties of city employees, including our police officers. There's a statement that the Lawrence Police Department shall not enter into a memorandum of understanding with the United States under Section 287G of the Immigration and Nationality Act in order to enforce federal immigration law without the prior approval of the City Commission. So federal law allows local agencies to enforce federal immigration laws, provided there is an MOU that's entered into between that agency and the federal government. But this provision of the ordinance would say the City Commission would have to approve any such MOU in advance. Moving on to the next section, this talks about the city departments, and it goes through each of them. We start with the Lawrence Police Department, and the ordinance draft language states that that department shall comply with department policies that are applicable to immigrants and anything else. We have listed them by name, but then also broadly said any other policies that might apply. I do want to note that Sanctuary Alliance had a request to include some of the language from the Police Department's administrative policy into the actual ordinance. That has not been incorporated at this time. Just as a general matter, the department policies are left for approval by the department director, and that is how it has historically been. On occasion, policies are brought in front of the City Commission for review, for comment, or just for information. But as a general matter, it's the department director that has the ultimate discretion. But I did want to note for you that if you hear from Sanctuary Alliance and you are interested in adopting their request, I do have that language that they're asking to be part of the ordinance. And that would be, "Unless otherwise required by law, the Lawrence Police Department shall not notify ICE when booking arrestees into jail unless consideration is first given to the seriousness of the offense alleged to have been committed, and the impact on community safety such a notification would provide." So this is saying that in the Police Department policy, generally, police officers don't need to contact ICE every time somebody is taken into custody. But there is language in that policy that says, "If Police Department feels that it is necessary to contact ICE, they should first consider how serious is the offense? Are we talking a misdemeanor, a low-level property crime misdemeanor, or is this a higher-level felony where violence against another person was committed?" And then the impact on community safety such a notification would provide. Sanctuary Alliance also requested this language from the Police Department's policy. "Unless otherwise required by law, the Lawrence Police Department shall not participate in the service of civil detainers or administrative immigration matters, and shall not engage in, assist, or support federal immigration enforcement except in the following circumstances." So basically, the Lawrence Police Department would not provide assistance to ICE unless there is one of these exceptions that applies. Number one, "In response to an articulated direct threat to life or public safety." Two, "To safely execute a criminal warrant or court order issued by a local, state, or federal judge." C, "To assist an officer in an emergency." Or four, "To provide general traffic control for the benefit of the general public at large." So if there were a request for assistance that didn't meet one of these exceptions, then under the policy, the Lawrence Police Department would not provide that assistance. And so again, that's just for your consideration, and Chief Burns from the Lawrence Police Department will speak after me and go over some draft language that is in that draft, including this. The draft ordinance goes on to talk about the Lawrence Douglas County Fire Medical Department, stating that it provides emergency services to individuals in need regardless of immigration status. "The Lawrence Municipal Court shall not, unless otherwise required by law, inquire about the immigration status of any person charged, or initiate contact with federal immigration enforcement officials to report immigration status information should it be learned." It goes on to state that the Lawrence Municipal Court must provide interpretation services as required by law. So somebody who has trouble understanding English or doesn't speak English must be provided interpretation services. And no inquiry can be made on immigration status. There is also language stating what the city prosecutor shall and shall not do, including, "The city prosecutor shall not initiate the transfer of immigration information to ICE unless required by law." And I will say, at some of our recent meetings with Sanctuary Alliance, there has been a request to add the word "inquiry", so that it would state, "The city prosecutor shall not inquire about the immigration status or initiate the transfer." That language is still under review, and we're kind of still talking with Sanctuary Alliance about whether that language should be adopted in the ordinance. So that is one piece that's kind of still in flux. Otherwise, it goes on to state, "State that the city prosecutor shall negotiate plea agreements in a just and appropriate manner." Immigration status shall never be a bar to diversion programs. Public defenders under contract with the city should advise defendants on potential immigration consequences. Public defenders should also advise such defendants to seek counsel from a trained immigration attorney. And there is language that states the city will provide a reference to a resource that lists immigration attorneys for anybody looking for those kind of resources in municipal court. Moving on to finance, it states that city utility services like water, sewer, solid waste, and stormwater shall never be denied to any city resident on the basis of a person's immigration status. And the ordinance similarly sets out a list of documents that somebody could provide to set up their utility account. To help prevent loss to the city and to keep rates reasonable for all customers, if somebody is unable to provide one of the listed documents needed to set up a utilities account, they would not be denied service, but they might be asked to provide an additional deposit. And the reason for that is to keep rates reasonable for all customers. And then a person making payment to the city may be required to present a valid photo identification containing their photo and their name, just to ensure, again, that it is that person that is writing a check or making some payment to the city. Parks and Recreation, that section states that city facilities and services shall never be denied to any resident of the city on the basis of a person's immigration status, and that similarly lists documents a person can provide to establish proof of residency. Transit will not be denied to any person on the basis of immigration status, and that is not a factor in determining whether they can utilize those services. City Clerk's Office states that immigration status shall not prohibit such person from applying for and being granted a license permit or registration through the City Clerk's Office, except as required by law. And I noted for you in November that there were two licenses granted by the City Clerk's Office that by state statute do require proof of U.S. citizenship, and that is the pawnbroker's license and somebody applying for a liquor license or a cereal malt beverage license. And then the ordinance requires the City Clerk's Office to provide language translation services to any person upon request. Human Resources shall strive to recruit and hire a diverse workforce, and it shall utilize diversity-focused job boards and minority associations in recruitment activities whenever possible. Human Resources shall comply with laws regarding employment eligibility and employment records, but shall otherwise not collect, inquire, or disseminate immigration status information. And then finally, Human Resources shall conduct review of the city's internal policies and diversity training and help with appropriate amendments. And then finally, a section on Communications and Creative Resources. It states that "Communications and creative resources shall implement a translation subscription service to allow staff to speak with non-English-speaking customers on the phone or in person, and that written materials online should have an option to translate the webpage into other language." Our website is able to do that at this time. Somebody could just go to the City of Lawrence's website, scroll down, and then select the language that they'd want the website to be translated into. This section is new, based on a request made by Sanctuary Alliance. Sanctuary Alliance requested that there be non-retaliation language added to the ordinance that would prohibit any person from retaliating against any person who files a complaint alleging a violation of this language. It prohibits retaliation for the cooperation in an investigation on a complaint, and prohibits retaliation against a subject of a complaint. And this language is similar to language that the City Commission And this language is similar to language that the City Commission approved about a year and a half ago for the Community Police Review Board. We have similar non-retaliation language there. And then there's a definition for retaliation, any kind of conduct that's meant to harass or disturb another person. And then I'd like to end with another look at the scorecard, as we called it last time. So I'll just go through all of the requests that Sanctuary Alliance had made initially and show you whether that request has been adopted in either the city's ordinance, the document, or in the police department's policy. And if it's not in the police policy, then it's most likely in the city columns, if you'll be able to see that. So the first request was language about not collecting immigration-related information in the provision of city services, including policing unless otherwise required by law. And I've provided the citation to where that language is in the ordinance. Second request was language about not discriminating and serving all residents regardless of alienage or immigration status. That is in both the city policy or the ordinance and the police policy. And then accepting other forms of identification and a request for staff to provide a comprehensive list of what those other identifications can look like. We have provided that language as well. Request for language not allowing local funds, personnel, facilities to be used for immigration enforcement. And that has been partially included by the language stating that the City Commission has to first approve any MOU the Lawrence Police Department enters into with the federal government because that is resources of the city. Otherwise, it's just subject to City Commission approval. Another request to specifically prohibit law enforcement from complying with federal agency requests to support civil immigration enforcement. And I have, we have placed that in the police policy column and I've put pending City Commission direction in the city policy column. I gave you the proposed language that's being requested to be added. So that is up to the City Commission on whether to include that policy language in the ordinance. Further request to not comply with detainer requests unless with a judicial warrant, that is in the police department policy. So is not allowing local law enforcement officers to arrest or detain individuals based on administrative warrants. And then clarifying interaction between law enforcement and NCIC database. Limit providing immigration status information by law enforcement or courts to the database is also in the police department policy. And Chief Burns can expand upon that and let you know what is NCIC, what kind of information goes on there, if you'd like some more information. Prohibiting city prosecutors from transferring information to ICE. We do have that language in the draft city ordinance. Requiring public defenders to affirmatively and competently advise of the immigration consequences of criminal offenses, city document as well. And then immigration consequences should be considered in plea negotiations and the lack of status should never be a bar to diversion, also included in the city document. This request was modified slightly about a week and a half ago. The original request was to require local law enforcement to issue immediate public notice of any contact by state or federal agencies requesting assistance with federal immigration enforcement. So the request was for the police department or the city to immediately notify the public of any enforcement action taken by federal officials. We discussed that at a meeting about a week and a half ago and the request was modified to allow for public notice after ICE enforcement has completed a case in Lawrence. Lawrence Police Department could alert the public or advise that there was some enforcement action. And so Chief Burns considered that request and has added modified language into the police department policy. The reason that staff didn't recommend the original request is a worry about federal obstruction, that if there is an ongoing active investigation or enforcement action by federal officials and the public were advised of that by the city, there could be an issue with obstructing this federal investigation. And then requiring notice to people in custody if ICE or DHS wants to talk to them for any reason, that is in the police department policy. And then requiring ICE or DHS to notify a person's attorney prior to talking to them for any reason and certify having done so. This was talked about in November. The Lawrence Police Department and the city does not have jurisdiction over those agents that work for the federal government. And so this language is not included right now because it's very difficult to enforce, to command or require those agents of another agency to act a certain way or to advise a certain person. And then just two more slides. Requiring ICE and DHS officers to identify themselves and wear duty jackets if allowed into local facilities. That was the original request, which was also discussed and modified about a week and a half ago. The request turned into more of a public service announcement, kind of the educational piece, something that is posted for the public to see, to understand that the City of Lawrence does not enforce federal immigration law and any person who does enforce federal immigration law may or may not be identifiable. So some sort of educational piece, which staff did think was a reasonable request. We are definitely open to considering what that language would look like with that modified approach. And then similarly, there was an original request allowing, not allowing ICE or DHS into local facilities for the purpose of federal immigration enforcement. Again, if we have a public service announcement or that educational piece that states it's not the city that's enforcing federal law, then that is something that staff would be happy to consider. And then finally, the request for providing funding for legal representation for local residents in immigration proceedings is not included in any of the documents. That is an issue for the City Commission to discuss. It's a budget question on whether city funds would be used to help with legal representation in immigration proceedings. Oh, okay, last one. Finally, there was a request to provide language services so that foreign language speakers are able to access services. And as you can see, that's been added in a number of places in the city document as well as in the police policy. The next steps are to receive an update from the Lawrence Police Department, after that to receive community input, and then for the commission to direct staff on any desired changes to the current draft documents and/or to direct staff to conduct additional research or work as the commission sees appropriate. And then unless directed otherwise, staff intends to return with a completed product for City Commission vote at a later date. And I flew by that. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them. Otherwise, I'll hand it over to Chief Burns.
I will just add that before we start public comment, after the chief speaks, we will be hearing from the Sanctuary Alliance for five minutes as well.
Okay, thanks.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor Nanda.
Good evening.
Vice Mayor Finkodine, commissioners.
Good evening.
Evening. I think I'm going to do the opposite of what I was originally going to do, which is what we do a lot in police work. So I think I'm going to, the matrix was a, Maria did a good job of explaining the matrix and what the numbers were as far as the police department. But I think what I would do is go into a little more detail as far as what the policy actually states. And I think that may address maybe a few questions on the backside as far as the policy. Then I go back to the policy because I would assume all of you have had time to read it. So I don't want to insult you and read you the whole policy. I'll just take your questions after that. But I think the thing that I would like to acknowledge is this has been a very comprehensive process with a lot of very caring, intelligent people in the room that really try to, they're trying to do the right thing. And I just want that to be known. And I want to also be known that, you know, as far as the police department is concerned, we are really not really doing really anything different from what we have been doing besides putting it in writing, which is good. So our officers really know what they should be doing, but it's really not a lot different from what we were doing. But I would like to thank Sanctuary Alliance and anybody that was in the work group because it's been, I think I've been through four or five revisions, but obviously every time it hasn't been a lot of revisions, but it has been work. The first part on the matrix involving the police was 4.2 that states that not discriminating and serving all residents regardless of alienage and immigration status. Our policy says no member shall stop, question, arrest, or detain any individual based solely upon actual or suspected citizenship or immigration status. We also speak to, it also speaks to the same thing in 14.4. It says while it may be necessary to determine the identity of a victim or witness, members shall treat all individuals equally and without regard to race, color, or national origin in any way that would violate the United States or Kansas constitutions. All persons residing in the United States, documented or undocumented, are protected under the rights outlined in the U.S. Constitution, including the Fourth Amendment right against unnecessary search and seizure. The next item was accepting other forms of identification. We addressed that in 14.4. When identification is requested, members shall accept presentation of a photo identity document issued by a non-government organization or a verbal statement of the member's full name and date of birth. Members shall not require that a person produce a foreign passport or non-driver's license as evidence or evidence of identity. The next thing was Maria addressed this in the not allowing local funds, personnel, facilities to be used for immigration enforcement and specifically prohibiting law enforcement from complying with federal agency requests to support local immigration enforcement. Those are two separate ones. The first one was a partial. That's where the MOU comes through you all would be needed. Honestly, I don't see us ever coming to you to even ask that, but it's obviously there. The next portion would be addressed in 14.7 where it says that LPD members shall not engage in, assist, or support immigration enforcement except as follows. In response to articulated direct threat to life or public safety, to safely execute a criminal warrant or court order issued by a local, state, or federal judge to assist an officer in an emergency. In these situations, dispatch will immediately send officers to the location and notify an on-duty supervisor who will immediately respond to the scene. The LPD will respond the same as they would for any other public safety agency during an emergency situation. Once an on-scene, once a determination will be made by an on-duty supervisor, if the situation is one which LPD should legally be involved. That was very important for me because obviously when you're in this line of work, and obviously I've been through it myself, when you're waiting for somebody to help you, a couple of minutes can seem like a couple of hours. And we do that right now, whether it's the sheriff's department, whether it's university police, whether it's Udoor, it doesn't matter. We go, we get there, we find out what's going on, and if it's something that we shouldn't be involved in, we leave. And that's the right thing to do. Or we make a pretty good witness. We stay there and say, you know, this is messed up, but we back up and we watch it and we're going to be a good witness if we need to be one. And that's what this calls for. And I believe that's the right thing to do. And then the last one in that is traffic control for the benefit of the traveling public only. Not complying with detain request unless with judicial warrant. That's covered under 14.7. Under no circumstances will an LPD member become involved in the service of civil detainers or administrative immigration matters with ICE unless listed policy exception has been met. Also states LPD members may not detain, arrest, or transport a person solely based on a civil immigration detainer or administrative warrant. The individual must have a criminal warrant issued by a court or underlying probable cause for criminal charges in order to detain or arrest it. That's always been that way. We are local law enforcement. We do not enforce federal law. We do not have a jurisdiction. We do not have the ability to do that. That is nothing new. Next one is not allowing local law enforcement officers to arrest, detain individuals based on administrative warrants. Same thing, covered under 14.7. LPD members may not detain, arrest, or transport a person solely based on a civil immigration detainer or administrative warrant. Individual must have a criminal warrant issued by a court of underlying probable cause for charges in order to be detained or arrested. Clarifying interaction between law enforcement officer and NCIC database. Limit providing immigration status info by law enforcement officer or court through database. We cover that under 14.7. The Lawrence Police Department does not enter immigration status into the NCIC database. This next one was one that we were not able to come into agreement with. Requiring local law enforcement officers to issue, well, I take that back. We did come into agreement. That's the one that Maria read that was changed. That the initial one was to, talking about the public notice. What I came up with was notification will be made to our public affairs office when we have provided assistance to ICE so that public notification may be made. Our public affairs office will notify the city public affairs office and work with quarter to make some type of public notification if we are to assist ICE. That's sort of the compromise that I came up with. It's not exactly, obviously, what we wanted, but I think it's a partial win on that one. Requiring ICE, requiring notice to people in custody if ICE DHS wants to talk to them for any reason. That's covered under 14.6. Members will ensure that suspects are advised of which law enforcement agency that they are speaking with prior to the start of any interview and will advise a person in custody if ICE or DHS request to talk to them for any reason. This one Maria covered under requiring ICE DHS to notify a person's attorney prior to talking to them for any reason to certify having done so. It's not included, obviously, because ICE does not work for me. I can't mandate the procedures that they use. Providing language services so that foreign language speakers are able to access services. Yes, that's covered under 14.6. Translation services will be made available if needed for language clarification purposes or upon the request of any suspect. And that was, that covers that. There was one other thing that came up at the last meeting where there was a request for the definition of emergency to be more defined. That was defined. The definition from Blacks Law Dictionary was used. And there was also a request for about if you do not follow the policy, what would be the repercussions being placed in there? What I decided to do with that is, in policy and procedure, there's something called a chief's preface, which is really at the beginning of policy and procedure where you sort of address what policy is, why it's there, why we need to follow it. I already have that. What I'm going to do is basically add a sentence that talks about... What I'm going to do is basically add a sentence that talks about the consequences of not following policy, and it would just be a basic sentence, something like, "Any member who does not comply with Department of Policy may be subject to discipline." I think that covers it all. I think that I need to speak to in general about not following policy and procedure, and not just concentrate on one. And I think that generally, our officers understand that they're going to be held accountable for not following policy and procedure. But I think that's the easy way to fix it, is for me to put that in the chief's preface. And with that, I'll take any questions about any specific sections of the policy that you may have.
Chief, what are your thoughts in regard to the language that's requested to be under the police section in the city ordinance? Adding the language from the policy to that ordinance?
Honestly, I personally don't have a big issue with it because that's going to be addressed in our policy. Now, obviously, you know, updates in policies happen, best practices in policies happen. If something like that was to happen where a change, a modification would need to be made, obviously, I think if it's codified in the city policy, that may be something where we would have to come back and say, hey, we would like to change this sentence or make an update. But other than that, I don't have a personal probably problem with that.
Okay. Thank you. Are there other questions for the chief?
I had one. You talked about the NCIC database. Do we ever enter anything into that database, or is that just we use more for reference?
We do. We may put property into it, like stolen property, things like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have a question?
No, I just want to say thanks to the chief for working on this. I should appreciate it. And if Maria's coming back up, I'll thank her, too.
I know there were other officers that joined that group also. So to those many officers, also, thank you for working with that group.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was city staff, there was other police departmental staff, there was Sanctuary Alliance, there was obviously folks up here that joined in. It was a total collaboration, and like I said, a lot of people worked very hard on it, a lot of good discussion, a lot of give and take. I think out of, failed to mention that, but I think out of the original ask, there were, out of what I read, there were 13 items, and I think out of those 13, we only had one that was really a non-agreement. The other two were, we found partial, partial agreement on, so I think that's a, I think that's a win-win-win for everybody, as far as I'm concerned. Everybody may not feel that way, but that's how I feel. I speak for everyone, but I'll speak for me on that. I think anytime you can come away from any type of work group and, you know, at least come that close, it's a, it's a win, for, at least for me. So, yeah, a lot of people did a lot of work, and...
We appreciate it, yeah.
Maria, can I say one more thing? I appreciated you saying that you were already doing a lot of this, but just the act of clarifying it for the public, I think, is really important for engagement and everyone knowing what their rights are. So, again, I want to acknowledge that you were already doing a lot of this, but that your work is still greatly appreciated.
Yes, no, I appreciate you saying that. And yes, it's also important that the community sees it in writing also. So, yes, I agree 100% on that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we'll hear from the Sanctuary Alliance.
Good evening, commissioners, city staff. My name's Maria Elferro. I am with Sanctuary Alliance. Just have a few things we'd like to say. First, we'd just like to take a few moments before we address policy to show our gratitude. Since the creation of Sanctuary Alliance in July of 2019, so we're still very new, we have had overwhelming support from the Lawrence communities and allies across the state, and we have found, only found our success in this work through the continuous encouragement and voice of Lawrenceans who saw our vision and joined us in solidarity to help protect and uplift the immigrant and migrant community. So, thank you so much, Lawrence, for showing up. We really appreciate that. We'd also like to take a moment to thank the city staff, the Lawrence Police Department, and commissioners who have met with us several times. They've called on us for our research, listened to what we feel as grassroots organizers is necessary to keep Lawrence safe and welcoming to all its residents. I truly feel a lasting relationship has begun to form, and I hope that we can continue to build trust and be an example to the community of how we can forge allyship in our municipal process. We are so pleased with this progress so far from the city and from the Lawrence Police Department. They have worked with us to create the drafts you see today, and we're encouraging the commissioners to not only approve the work that we have so far, but allow us to continue work. Since our last meeting with city staff, we have discussed and would like to request the following provisions be incorporated into the final draft ordinance. First one, under Section 1-1004, we would like to see the inclusion of specific criteria for the Lawrence Police Department's administrative policy, ensuring community protections while still allowing for discretion in the police department practices. Two, we request in Section 1-1005 to be expanded to include additional language regarding the process for reporting violations, the follow-up process when violations occur, and protections for individuals or groups who report violations, including specific non-retaliation provisions. Again, we offer this request in the spirit of building community trust and not in order to be punitive. Third, we request the inclusion of an additional section regarding the timely community notice in the event ICE or federal agents contact or request assistance from the Lawrence Police Department. We've already discussed some possible avenues for this notification with the department in our meetings and are available for more conversation about those potential avenues. By adding these provisions and continuing to consult with Sanctuary Alliance, we feel that both the city ordinance and police policy will contain all requests from the community. Our goal as Sanctuary Alliance is to show that Lawrence truly is and can remain a welcoming city that values safety, compassion, and inclusion for all of our community members. Our goal is to ensure that our community can be confident that we're preserving local resources for local priorities, and that we're not putting our city at risk for legal liabilities over an unethical federal agenda that we have no obligation or authority to enforce. Our goal is to protect and build trust between our community and local government. We are very close to our goal of creating legal binding language that would not only protect the immigrant community, but allow members of Lawrence to feel safe and protected. This ordinance will have positive effects for many marginalized and vulnerable community members who are often criminalized in account of their race, ethnicity, culture, language, nationality, immigrant status, and more. We very much look forward to ongoing conversations and eventually a final vote on the complete policy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Maria?
No, thank you.
No question, but I echo what was said to the chief and staff. Thank you for all your work on this, and you've been to lots of meetings, and you've done a lot of work and everyone working with you, so we appreciate all the effort. We can obviously truly do better when we're working together.
Yeah, we're very happy with what has happened so far, just seeing the work and collaboration. I think for a lot of our members who either come from this community like myself or come from other marginalized communities, we don't typically put our trust directly into government systems or police systems, and so starting to see that relationship build has been very encouraging to myself and to this organization, and this is a group of organizers from other organizations, too. So hopefully, and more than likely, you'll be seeing us pop up more than once and more than just the situation, so I hope we can continue seeing that relationship grow.
Yeah, I also want to reflect that this was an incredibly productive model for making real change in a whole community, and I think that there's real potential in having dialogue and having real change and moving the needle on important issues through the model that we've used in this conversation. I'm really proud of the opportunity with all of the leaders in your group and our city staff, who has been phenomenal. And, you know, I honestly think that the biggest part of the success of this was listening and hearing and engaging in dialogue, which is something we know works, but it's very easy to not do. I think that you all are leaders, and you're really showing our community how it's done. I mean, to get all of this in writing over the short amount of time, honestly, in large scale of things, is really moving, and I just, I really, really appreciate that. I've appreciated the police department, Maria, all of the other staff who's been part of this, Commissioner Larson as well. It has really been a phenomenal process, so thank you so much.
Thank you. We appreciate it, and we appreciate the community's support because we would not be here without community members speaking up, so.
Can I ask you a quick question? In the three proposals that you still have outstanding, are you, are you looking at kind of asking the commission to say, looks almost done, keep talking, and then bring it back again for another study session?
So, our hopes is, and this is obviously based on the discussion decision you make, is we do believe that these three points that I brought up are criteria that need to be discussed and incorporated into ordinance and police policy. We're willing to continue working with city staff and consulting, and we would love to see that process move along so we can get a final draft put in and put to a vote. So, we are looking to seek some recommendation to move forward with those three topics and any other revisions, so.
Okay. Any other questions or anything?
I don't know if you were paying attention to some of the ideas that the chief had to suggest for some of the verbiage, especially on the notice, but just off the cuff, did that sound like something you could work with if you have another month?
Yeah, absolutely. I think if we have more time, I think both, even with our last meeting on January 31st, we were already discussing and coming up with ways that we can incorporate. So, there has already been discussion in that smaller group, so I think we would definitely already have the, hopefully, green light from everyone else to keep going, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions in regard to any of the policy that's been presented before we move to public comment? Okay. So, again, I'm going to read the piece on public comment. Everyone has three minutes to give public comment on this issue. Please do not engage in audible, who wishes to do so? Please do not engage in audible response to public comment to ensure that everyone in the audience can hear. Public comment is directed toward the commission to inform discussion on a given topic. Residents who are engaging in public comment regardless of whether we agree or disagree with their statements should feel safe accessing this building and the podium. Not engaging in audible response to public comment will support safe access to the commission. So, with that, I will open up public comment on this issue.
Hi there. My name is Elise Higgins, and as folks in the Sanctuary Alliance were talking about getting ready for today's meeting, we thought that it would be a good idea to revisit some of the presentation that we did originally in 2019, and specifically to revisit the myths and facts section. Not because any of you here really need to hear myths and facts, but because we know that this meeting has a much wider audience, including some of the folks whose comments we've read on newspaper articles. So, without further ado, I want to share a couple, and then some of my colleagues will share more. One common myth is that sanctuary cities obstruct immigration law, but in fact, sanctuary policies protect local jurisdictions from numerous liabilities. For example, local police cannot legally arrest or detain someone for a civil violation of immigration law. It is important to note that a civil offense involves violations of administrative matters, and in the case of immigration law, directs the administrative ruling of the federal government, while a criminal offense can be a violation of local, state, or federal ordinances that our city can have jurisdiction over. And of course, Chief Burns also went over some of these distinctions. The second myth is that sanctuary cities provide a safe haven for dangerous criminals. As you've seen, we already do have some exceptions built in to our policy proposals for cases of public safety, but I'll go on and add that immigrant populations are not more likely to commit crimes than native-born population, and may actually be less likely. Studies have not found immigrant status to be a reliable predictor of likelihood to commit crime. Higher immigrant populations sometimes correlate with lower crime rates. Cities that participated in ICE programs did not display a reduction in crime rates, and undocumented immigrants may be selected on attributes that predispose them to low criminal propensity, like high motivation to work and ambition to achieve. Related to this point, unauthorized immigrants, much more so than lawful immigrants, have strong incentives to avoid criminal involvement for fear of detection and deportation. In both scenarios, increases in undocumented immigration should decrease violent crime over time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there, I'm Joel. I would just like to continue on with what Elise said, just to recap some myths and facts that are often associated with the conversation at hand. And the first one, the first myth is that undocumented immigrants are a drain on the economy and live off taxpayer money, which in fact, undocumented immigrants contribute more to the economy and tax revenues than they receive in benefits. Additionally, poor immigrants use public benefits at a lower rate than poor native-born citizens, and conversely, policing and detaining our immigrant neighbors is costly. Additionally, statistics on poverty and unemployment show that sanctuary jurisdictions have a lower poverty rate, 2.3% on average, and lower unemployment rates, about 1.1% on average, in comparison to non-sanctuary cities. Thank you.
Thank you.
How's it going, guys?
Hiya.
My name's Joey. Can I say, coming from Topeka, it's good to be in a deliverer body that's getting stuff done. So, the fourth myth that I'm covering is that people should wait in line to come in legally to our country, but supporters of sanctuary cities just want open borders. The reality is, is that immigration policy currently does not provide fair or equitable opportunities. Furthermore, immigration law is civil law, not criminal law. Recently, U.S. Citizenship and Immigration Services has shown crisis-level delays in agencies' processing of immigration applications. Additionally, new rules threaten to cut legal immigration in half by denying visas and permanent residencies to hundreds of thousands of people for being simply too poor. There's no one line. There are many lines with wait times that vary wildly depending on the type of green card that a prospective immigrant is applying for, the number of visas available, and his or her country of origin. For example, a brother or sister of a U.S. citizen from the Philippines applying for a family-sponsored visa may have been waiting 24 years as those visas have been oversubscribed. This is according to the State Department's latest figures. The actual time can often be longer. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Zach Newby, and I will be addressing the fifth myth. Sanctuary cities will lose access to federal grants. Here's the facts. Since immigration is a federal responsibility, cities and counties are not required to enforce federal immigration law in any way, and the Tenth Amendment guarantees freedom from federal commandeering of local resources. For example, in 2017, the DOJ announced it would be withholding federal grant funding applying to the FY 2017 Burn Justice Grant and the COPS Hiring Program unless applicants complied with ICE cooperation. The Federal District Court had found that these requirements exceeded congressional authority and violated the Administrative Procedure Act and the U.S. Constitution. authority and violated the Administrative Procedure Act and the U.S. Constitution. As a result, the federal government's attempts to defund sanctuary cities and counties have repeatedly failed. On August 23rd in 2019, a federal court granted Santa Clara County and San Francisco permanent protections against the threat to withhold federal funding from sanctuary jurisdiction. On October 31st of 2019, a Ninth Circuit Court upheld the block of DOJ conditions on grants to sanctuary cities, arguing that federal law didn't authorize the department to require immigration enforcement assistance as a condition of funding. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Maureen Harwitz. I live here in Lawrence. And I want to thank you again for all the work that you've been doing. This has just been amazing to watch. And I'm just going to repeat some of the things that I've already been said because I don't think it can be emphasized enough that with all of the racist anti-immigrant propaganda floating around, that it has no basis in reality. And just to reiterate quickly, a recent large-scale, nonpartisan study based on ICE's own data set found sanctuary jurisdictions have less crime, higher median annual incomes, lower poverty rates, and lower rates of unemployment when compared to similar areas that are not sanctuary jurisdictions. And I also want to say that the pieces of the ordinance we're discussing tonight feel especially poignant to me. So soon after ICE shot 26-year-old Eric B. in the face when he questioned non-uniformed ICE officers about arresting his mother, we cannot distance ourselves far enough from ICE. We need to let people know if ICE is poised to attack here, and we must take every possible step to ensure that Lawrence Police never again mistakenly cooperate with ICE. And we need to put that distance in our city ordinance where it's clear to everyone who lives here and cannot be misunderstood or easily changed. And I am so glad to see all of this happening. And you are, this is just really amazing to watch. And thank you so much.
Thank you.
My name is Dan Katie, and I'm a taxpayer and resident of Lawrence, Kansas. No one is above the law. Anyone paying attention, the last couple of weeks has heard it repeatedly from Nancy Pelosi, Adam Schiff, Jerry Nadler. However, it seems that there is a large group of people that are above the law. Protections are sought for persons who have entered our country illegally. They're here to seek a better life, which you cannot blame them for. However, if an employee embezzles from their employer to seek a better life, should they be excused from prosecution? If I don't agree with taxes levied against me, can I be given sanctuary from payment? Elected government officials are sworn to uphold all laws, not just laws they agree with. Refusing to cooperate with federal agencies is obstruction of justice and illegal. If you don't like the law, get with your legislature and have it changed. In the country right now, unemployment for African-American and Hispanic workers are at record lows. Supply and demand has kicked in, and wages for lower-income workers are rising. Entry-level jobs that were $8 per hour four years ago are now $11 to $16 an hour. This progress in wages is negatively affected by low-skilled illegal immigrants. I personally worked in the construction business for 20 years and witnessed this firsthand. The way I've seen it work is, a contractor will hire illegal immigrants, pay them cash, that cash, no taxes are paid, they don't pay payroll taxes, they don't pay insurance on them. Then that money is funneled back to the home country. Wages are dropped because, to be competitive, people that are doing things the right way have to lower wages for their workers to try to get jobs. I've seen this happen many times, and in 2015, a Lawrence drywall contractor was indicted on a $13 million scheme using undocumented immigrants. There's a way to get the system.
Time is up, Dan. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Alex Kimball-Williams. Thank you so much for working with us and Sanctuary Alliance to make our goals a possibility. I want to echo what Courtney Shipley was saying earlier about codifying these policies, however, because it does show a seriousness and an accountability to our community that mirrors what we're asked to show the police department. It also shows solidarity with our undocumented community members. There is a potential, however, like even though right now we don't have a lot of these issues, that we could have a potential for increased issues with federal agencies and federal regulations, like we're seeing in other spaces. So even though it's not an emergency now, we're not having a lot of cases right now, there is the potential that in the future, that if we had this framework laid, that it could help us out. Sorry, I have, like, anxiety. There's also other marginalized and vulnerable communities that stand to benefit from this, from very simple procedural changes with the police's policies. So while it does seem immigrant-focused, there's still a lot of folks of color that stand to benefit from this ordinance. And then the last thing I'll say is that we're on native land, and a lot of the anti-immigrant sentiments come from folks that are actually colonizers. So I just wanted to reiterate that. Thank you so much.
Other public comment?
Hi. I'm Chris Flowers. I didn't really prepare anything, but I just, something I think kind of interesting is, last time we were talking about this, there was someone here who was talking about how their immigrants can be violent criminals and that whole gang criminals-type stuff going on. But he's not here tonight because, last I heard, he was in jail for waiting trial for attempted murder. So just makes you wonder who's actually the dangerous criminals. Thank you.
Come on up, if you've got public comment. Keep it going.
My name is Lacey Rowe, and I am a member of the Sanctuary Alliance. I wanted to take a moment to reiterate why this work is so important and why it's important that we support these policies. Like we said before, our goal is to show that Lawrence is a true welcoming city that values safety, compassion, and inclusion of all of our community members. And we've also worked hard to dispel common myths about undocumented immigration and undocumented immigrants. The Sanctuary Alliance is a diverse grassroots movement consisting of Lawrence residents who are committed to improving the quality of life for all members of the community. Collectively, we put a lot of time and research into preparing a comprehensive overview document, which we presented a few months ago, complete with dozens of references. And together with city staff, commissioners, and the police department, we are finally seeing the fruits of all of these efforts to make Lawrence a truly safe and welcoming city. I'd like to say thank you again for supporting this initiative and for collaborating with us. I hope that the city incorporates our remaining provisions because there has been great progress on this draft policy, and we are really close to having a thorough and robust policy that will be able to address all of the concerns expressed by our community. I hope that the commission will continue to express their support for this important and meaningful work. And I'd also like to add that we have extra copies of our myths versus fact sheets with us for anyone who'd like to learn more background information about this topic. So feel free to grab one from us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Gary Bjorgi. I live on Jana Drive. First, I would just like to make a comment to the mayor. I felt it was kind of inappropriate for her to say at an earlier meeting of the city commission that we're all illegals. It made me feel like I better check my title insurance on my house. Second thing I would like to say is that this concern we're having is not about poking an eye in Trump. I hope everybody appreciates that. I mean, President Obama was called the deporter-in-chief by Hispanic organizations. And also, I was really impressed. There's a lot of good work here, and a lot of these changes to the city ordinance make sense to make sure that people are here, can live here in some convenient, secure way. But at the same time, when I listen to someone say that, "Well, if we can be welcoming to anybody who wants to come." I mean, there's, I read in USA Today a few months ago, there are 3 billion people want to move to the United States if they could. Well, I don't think Lawrence is ready for that increase in population. But anyway, even to say that, talk about more undocumented immigrants coming here, we already have, we're talking about, the city commission's been talking about, we don't have enough housing in this city, we don't have enough jobs, we don't have enough food, we don't have enough mental health care. All of these things, we can't take care of the people that are here, let alone the many more who I think would probably put Lawrence on their list of possible destinations if Sanctuary Alliance had their way. I was just very, I wanted to thank the police chief for taking the position that he would not want to be in a position of having to announce, make a public announcement on pending ICE activities in Lawrence. I think this would create safety issues, not reduce concerns about safety. And so I applaud the police chief for that position. And I also hope that he's able to make sure that the members of the police force are never going to be put in a situation where, because they have to act rapidly in response to a rapidly changing situation--
Your time is up, Gary. Thank you.
--they will be penalized and maybe abused by the city commission for their actions. Thank you.
I'm a resident here in Lawrence, Kansas. I wanted to thank the city commission for working with the Sanctuary Alliance. I believe that I live on stolen land, and I don't know what to say about my immigration status knowing that, but I just really want to support the efforts of this collaborative work. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this issue? Okay. We will bring it back up to the commission.
So I'll start. I just want to point out that this ordinance, as well as the policies, there's nothing in here that states that we will not follow federal law. Everything within both of these documents indicate that we must follow federal law. If you'll read through it, it actually, throughout it, is peppered with the language that whatever our action is, we'll do it except when it contradicts federal law. So we are following the law. We have just codified it, as we've seen. And, you know, I really appreciate that. So I also want to add that, and I had the opportunity to work with the mayor, with the Sanctuary Alliance and staff on this whole process since, what, October, November? I can't remember how long we've been doing this. And it's been a very eye-opening process for me, and I really have appreciated those who we worked with through the Sanctuary Alliance, specifically Maria, Lacey, Alex, and Elise, who attended most of those meetings and helped us work through the language and gave us some ideas, and we gave them some ideas. And our legal staff, Maria, as well as Tony, set through those. And I think it just shows, and go back to this whole idea of a model for our community groups to engage positively with your government. And to be able to sit together one-on-one and actually discuss and hear what your concerns are, as well as what our concerns are, that is really the way that this process should work. And if you really want to elicit positive change, I would just highly recommend that you take a look at what we've done for the past several months and try to engage in that manner. Thank you.
I might just draw, since you've said that, and I agree 100%. This has been really invigorating to see these people operate with staff and other commissioners. It's something that Marielle mentioned, which is how difficult it is for some people to engage in governmental organizations, or they have trauma that is related to police interactions or government interactions. That's another thing that makes it so impressive that so many of these people were able to positively engage and collaborate. So much trust was built, I believe, and I think that's really inspiring. I had a couple compliments also to give about the policy, if anybody's interested. 414.2, oops, I clicked out of it. "This confidence and the commitment will increase the effectiveness of this department in protecting and serving the entire community and recognizing the dignity of all persons." That's spectacular. That's incredible to see, that in a police policy. And again, similarly, in 414, I think, kind of a similar. "The need for community trust and cooperation is an essential component of effective policing and public safety." That's an incredible acknowledgement. How important it is to allow people to be able to be in those spaces and feel safe. That helps the police do their job. That's incredibly important. And I'm so glad that that was something that there was consensus on with staff and the chief and the other police officers and Sanctuary Alliance. And I don't know where we're going to go on conversation about maybe the last three or four items that the alliance, and it seems like chief had some ideas of some add-ons, so I'll just leave that maybe to you guys.
You're part of us, guys.
Sorry.
appropriate, what are the commission's thoughts on continuing that conversation for maybe another month or whatever that takes schedule-wise, and then bringing it back? And do we bring back a draft ordinance based on what you heard proposed tonight, or do we bring it back for another study session?
Is that something we can decide tonight, Sherry?
What do you want to come out?
Yeah, I mean, is that a voting?
No. I mean, you're just-
We're providing direction.
We're giving direction.
Providing a direction of what you're wanting to see.
Okay, so we can do that?
Yes.
Well, I, you know, I am appreciative of where we're at with this. I know they had three more items. The one that I would be most concerned about is the third item where they wanted us to, the timely notification aspect of it. I'm very concerned about safety issues on that. And I know there's been continued discussion about how they possibly do that, but I would be very concerned to have anything in there that would jeopardize any aspect of safety of our police officers or our community members.
Yeah, and I guess I didn't address, are we bringing direction based specifically on those three items? Are we letting our legal staff kind of take a look at what the implications are of the proposal, or?
Well, what staff has brought us is pretty confident. I understand that's why they give it to us, kind of in this form. So I was a little, I was a little interested in what some of the additions that the chief was still interested in, also not just Sanctuary Alliance, but it sounded like chief also had some things he wanted to add or clean up, perhaps.
Yeah, and I think there was some overlap.
Right, oh yeah, of course.
So I guess I'll say what I'm interested in is sending that back to that work group that has been working on this, to look at the proposals, both from the chief as well as from the Sanctuary Alliance. And, you know, we've had lots of conversations around feasibility on every proposal that we've discussed, so to bring that back as a study session might be a good place to go with that.
I'm okay with that. One thing I would say is that I'm a little concerned about having to have the police policy put into the ordinance. I mean, I think it's sufficient to have it in the police policy, and I, you know, I appreciate what the chief said. If you're going to have updates, if you're going to have best practices, you need to have some flexibility there. I have confidence that, you know, the policy will not be changed without a community discussion, because I expect the policy would come back to us, you know, with some information.
I don't think that's necessarily true.
Okay.
That staff-based policies would come back to us. It would go ultimately to Craig, but not necessarily to the city commission. So I would be more interested in an either-or. Either it's in the ordinance and we can go and do an amendment, or it would come back to the city commission for discussion.
On the change of the policy, or?
So the language specifically, yeah, the policy, yes, but specifically the language that was requested to be in the ordinance.
So if I understand correctly, if there was an MOU for some reason, or a request or a need for some legal reasons for an MOU, then it would come to us. But since this is an internal policy, I guess what we would normally think of as an administrative policy, if some change happened, even if it was due to some legal precedents, they wouldn't necessarily have to inform us of that. So I think I share your concern on that part.
And I'll ask Craig to weigh in if you want on that. Is that a correct presumption?
That if we adopt, if you adopt ordinances, then yes, we're going to have to bring those back, and we're going to have to, each time there's a change, bring those back to you for that amendment. And we would not do any policies, we would not, the chief nor any other department director would put administrative policies in that would be in conflict with that ordinance.
Correct, but if we did not put that in the ordinance and the policy was changed through this specific policy, it would not necessarily come back to the commission unless that was-
The police administrative policies, no, would not bring those back by requirement, but anything that's a significant change, we would, it would be best practices for somebody who's employed by you to make sure that we're not surprising you or the community in something that's a serious matter. So that's true. There's many discussions that we've had in here that relate to the policies and procedures in all departments, and we try to keep you, you and the community abreast of any changes that are going to happen when they're, that we think are going to impact them. But when you create laws and ordinances, then we have to work within those boundaries. So that's where the division is.
So can we have in the policy somewhere written that says that any changes to the policy would have to go through the commission? I know that might be crossing the line.
You would be layering in additional process for us to carry out our responsibilities as staff.
I mean, it would be better to, in my opinion, to say, you know, "This will be part of the ordinance," or, you know, simply say, "We have confidence that this is a significant enough policy, that it's our understanding that it will come back for information and review by the city commission." That's the kind of process I'm talking about, not having it being approved by the city commission.
Yeah.
There's a difference.
There is a difference, yes.
And I guess I understood the compromise that's being discussed would be just a couple different parts being put in the ordinance and the rest of the-
Exactly.
-rest of it being left alone.
Exactly, right.
Yeah, so, and chief seemed open to that, and I think, I mean, I think the process is a good process to follow through and, you know, come back. Now, I would just say, I would be happy if it came back on a regular agenda item. I'm generally not a big fan of study sessions. I just swell gear on action items, so we don't have to bring everyone back every time, but if it wants to come back in a study session, I'm fine with that, too. But I think we're getting close enough, especially if we have agreement that we could bring it back, discuss it, vote on it, and move forward. I think, you know, bringing this to a resolution and making that statement would be good. But again, if staff thinks after, you know, or others think after discussion that it needs to be in a study session, I'm fine with that. But generally speaking, I think we'll, close enough, we could bring it back.
I'm open to that suggestion.
I'm certainly not hearing that we're at impasse on any of the issues that the chief brought or that the Sanctuary brought, Sanctuary Alliance, I apologize. So I wouldn't be opposed to bringing it back as an ordinance either, so long as discussion occurs on these other items with that work group. Does that sound like a fair?
Yeah, that's kind of where I thought we were, so.
Yeah, I mean, I'd expect those three to be either incorporated or a statement that they're not incorporated, and we'd have that discussion at that time, but I think we're pretty close here.
I do want to reiterate my concern about the item number three, that any language we put in the ordinance, that it's very carefully worded, that it does not jeopardize the safety of our community.
Okay.
I want to respond to that. So in supervisor responsibilities, and I'm sorry, I don't know where Sanctuary Alliance is on this, but I did notice, ensure notification is made to the public affairs officer when LPD has provided assistance to ICE. So this happened in the past tense. We're not expecting them to call right away, so that public notification may be made. And I thought I read somewhere else that they would contact the city information officer for the purposes of a statement.
The proposal that our public information will work with the city's public information after the fact if we indeed insisted, provided assistance to ICE. It wasn't a while in progress or before type of thing. It was after that Lawrence Police Department assisted ICE with a service of a criminal warrant at this location on this date.
And those are, those are common reports every day about bank robberies or houses, those are very common, public releases of information, not different than what you would normally do.
Yep.
Yeah, the way we have it worded is fine. It's, my understanding is that the Sanctuary Alliance may want more, because they're asking for that item to be addressed still, so.
Yes, I would be in agreement that the request was more. I had the same concern with you, and obviously, my concern was obviously also something different of basically putting myself or another member of my staff in jeopardy of basically making a policy that I know is going to be violated. Because it pretty much is going to boil down to, "Do we believe that you are being truthful with us, that ICE did not contact you and let you know that they're going to be here?"
Yeah.
Because I've tried to make clear that the standard practice is that, I don't know when they're coming and going. They come, they go, they do what they do. They do not notify Greg Burns of their actions. They're allowed to do that, and since I've been here, they have not told me when they're here. They usually bring their own people, they do what they're going to do, and they leave. So if they come and they do something, and then maybe a citizen says, "Oh, there is ICE." And then, I don't know anything about it, they're going to say, somebody's going to say, "Chief, you didn't tell us that ICE was here." So it's going to be, "Do you believe that I didn't know they were here, or do you not believe it?" I think some people would give me the benefit of doubt, and some people are going to say, "No, you had to know they were here, chief." So I'm sort of setting myself up to violate a policy. So that was also another concern that I had with it. So that's sort of the way that I looked at it.
One thing I think that also addresses it for me, because and I, just to be clear, as a public person also out there, I do want to know in a reasonably timely fashion when something has happened, no less than any other thing that's happened in town. But what I think that you've put in here that gives me confidence is the supervisor and their responsibilities, which, again, I want to clarify, is something that would probably happen anyway. Anyone could ask for a supervisor to be on scene at any time. That's not terribly unusual. But that you've lined their responsibilities out here so clearly, it's going to be difficult for someone to make the case that there's not a record that's been made, that there was, chain of command was somehow violated. I just feel like you've been very clear here. And, you know, a reasonably timely fashion of being told after the fact is what's more important to me. And I don't know if there's very many Sanctuary people here left if they want to comment on that, if you guys want to take that extra month to talk about that and see if you have more agreement on that. But I share, I share your concern. Well, what they asked for originally and where you guys might be after how much work they've done might be a different place. So I just want to give that, put that out there. For me, hearing about it after the fact in a timely fashion, especially with as much as they've built in here, I share your concern that expecting immediate information is not reasonable.
Yeah, I said, the way it's written now, I think it's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I said that.
And what was the third thing?
That was it.
What was the third thing?
Accountability, kind of, or the parameters of, those were kind of two little-
For reporting and process.
Right.
So that was the other thing.
But you mentioned Blacks Law, right?
That was for a better definition of what exactly defines an emergency.
Right. That was one of them.
That was taken care of. That was-
Good, okay.
So am I hearing the commission take item three off the table of their recommendations or the requests from Sanctuary Alliance, or is that still something that we want that group to discuss?
No, I think it should be discussed. I think, you know, I think the chief has some ideas, they have some ideas. I think we can come back. If they can reach an agreement, great. If they can't, well, then we'll hear from both of them and decide at that point where that language is.
Yeah, I'm always open for discussion, but I'm satisfied with the way it's written right now.
Any other discussion on this item from commissioners?
I just make a request from Maria or staff. I know that you guys are doing this and following a lot of it. In the midst of this, I got a couple folks contacting me today, talking about some new DOJ lawsuits, I think against Washington and maybe New Jersey or something.
New York.
New York or something. And again, I mean, I know the overall goal is to be a welcoming city that, you know, complies with federal law, so I assume you're keeping up on those sorts of things and seeing, making sure we're on the right side of the line, I guess.
Yes, thank you for that question. It has been in the news that the Trump administration is stepping up some enforcement action recently. Our office does keep an eye on that litigation. In November, we provided a pretty comprehensive list of all of the pending litigation and cases that had been closed, and so I can certainly do another update if it's warranted. But I think Commissioner Larson made an excellent point and really took the words out of my mouth when she pointed out that littered all over the ordinance is language that says, unless otherwise required by law, that these actions will happen. And we've been very careful about including that language so that we don't run afoul of federal law that requires the city to act a different way.
Thank you.
Do you feel like you have sufficient direction?
Yes.
Everybody?
Thank you.
Okay. Well, in that case, we will take a 10-minute break, and then we will come back and take on the items around our illegal camping and panhandling ordinances. to be a welcoming city that, you know, complies with federal law. So I assume you're keeping up on those sorts of things and seeing, making sure we're, um, on the right side of the line, I guess.
Yes, thank you for that question. Um, it has been in the news that the Trump administration is stepping up some enforcement action recently. Um, our office does keep an eye on that litigation. Um, in November, we provided a pretty comprehensive list of all of the pending litigation and cases that had been closed, and so I can certainly, um, do another update if it's warranted. But I think, um, Commissioner Larson made an excellent point and really took the words out of my mouth when she pointed out that littered all over the ordinances language that says unless otherwise required by law, that these actions will, will happen. And we've been very careful about including that language so that we don't run afoul of federal law that requires the city to act a different way.
Thank you.
Do you feel like you have sufficient direction?
Yes.
Everybody?
Thank you.
Okay. Well, in that case, we will take a 10-minute break and then we will come back and, um, take on the items around, um, our illegal camping and panhandling ordinances.[410.93]
Engaging in specific specified activities which are defined as sleeping or making preparations to sleep like laying down bedding, or storing personal belongings, or making any fire for the purpose of warmth or cooking, and then finally erecting a tent, lean to, or other similar temporary structure. Camping is prohibited in three general areas of the city. Number one, the public right-of-way, which is defined in Chapter 20 as an area dedicated to public use for pedestrian and vehicular movement, which may also accommodate public utilities. And that is a very broad definition. I'd just like to note again that we have a planning representative here. If you'd like more information on what that means, it really is best described with a map if there are questions on that, but that is a definition that's found in the City Code. Camping is also prohibited on public property located within the area of the city-zoned CD. And finally, camping is prohibited on private property without the consent of the property's owner. The code provides a penalty section for violation of that camping ordinance. The penalty can go up to $1,000 and/or up to six months in jail. The municipal court judge has great discretion on what fine to assess in a particular case based on the facts. We did pull some data and found that the fine is usually between $50 and $200, certainly not the maximum that the judge is allowed under the ordinance to assess. And then, community service is allowed. A person who has been assessed a fine by the municipal court judge can participate in community service to pay off those fines. Court costs are not included and cannot be paid off by community service because part of those court fines have to be transferred to the state under state law, so they have to be sent over. Here's a chart to show how many camping charges have been cited since 2014, and as you can see, the numbers really fluctuate year to year. In 2019, that was the lowest number. In the last five years, it was 12 with one conviction, seven dismissed cases, and four And then, staff did attach a pretty comprehensive chart to the agenda that showed some research on what other cities are doing. Those cities included surrounding cities to Lawrence and the Kansas City area with Wichita's ordinance. It also included the Big 12 cities as well. And some of the features of other city ordinances were language saying that if there were permission or a permit granted by the Director of Parks and Recreation, that camping would be allowed in those specified areas as designated by that director. Other language that was unique in the research was language concerning available shelter space, and this was really unique to the city of Wichita, which has an ordinance that says camping is prohibited unless there is no shelter space available. And I did reach out to the city of Wichita. They have established a homeless task force. There are four police officers that enforce that ordinance in Wichita. And the way that works is it's complaint-driven. If a member of the public complains about a violation of the camping ordinance, a police officer will respond, make contact with the person, advise them of resources, but then it's the police officer that contacts the shelters in Wichita to determine whether there is in fact no shelter space, whether there is. I have seen it in a court decision, which I will mention later in this presentation. It's a Ninth Circuit opinion where the court kind of talked about camping ordinances. There, after the litigation began, the police department started an initiative where they were working with the shelter so that 11:00 PM every evening, the shelter would notify the police department whether there was space there or not. So, it varies on how those ordinances are enforced and how the police department communicates with the shelters, but those are some trends in some cities. Otherwise, the other cities that have language have the permit language like I mentioned. So, Martin versus City of Boise, Idaho is the big case that discusses camping ordinances. This was a decision from the Ninth Circuit. The Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals considered a Boise ordinance which prohibited sleeping in public places and prohibited any person from using public property as a place of dwelling, lodging, or residence. The Ninth Circuit held that the law was invalid because it violated the Eighth Amendment when it imposed criminal sanctions when no alternative shelter is available. And the Eighth Amendment prohibits cruel, unusual punishment, and the court thought that citing a person who was homeless when the shelter was, when there was no capacity, no room, was in violation of that and not constitutional. I do want to note for the Commission, the state of Kansas is in the Tenth Circuit Court of Appeals. There are 12 federal circuits in the United States. Each state falls within one of them. We don't have direct case law in the Tenth Circuit or in Kansas that directly addresses this ordinance, but if the issue were to come up in the Tenth Circuit, the Ninth Circuit would be persuasive. But I do want to note, Kansas is in the Tenth Circuit, and this was a Ninth Circuit decision. It was appealed to the United States Supreme Court, but in December, the United States Supreme Court denied review. So, that law in the Ninth Circuit stands. I do want to briefly discuss park hours. That is under Section 15-208 of the City Code. It states that public parks, except for Berchem, are open daily from 6:00 AM to 11:30 PM. And then, Berchem specifically is open daily from 5:00 AM to 10:30 PM. This ordinance falls under the General Penalty Section under Chapter 1 of the City Code. The judge again has discretion on ordering any fines or jail time if it's appropriate. And then, moving on to panhandling. This is under Section 14-418. And there are two types of conduct that are prohibited under this ordinance. Number one is regular panhandling, I'll call it regular panhandling, in certain locations, which I'll review. And the second type of prohibited conduct is aggressive panhandling. So, panhandling generally is defined as any request for or solicitation of an immediate donation of money, a request or solicitation to purchase an item for an amount far exceeding its value in circumstances where a reasonable person would understand that the purchase is in substance a donation constitutes panhandling. And an example from the 2005 minutes that staff provided the Commission was if somebody buys a pencil for $5, $5 far exceeds the value of the pencil, and so the person buying it would know, reasonably know, that that amount is a donation. Panhandling is not passively standing, sitting, or engaging in a musical performance or other street performance with a sign or other indication that donations are being sought without any verbal request. And the term verbal request was really key during the minutes in 2005 into this ordinance. Somebody just passively sitting and not making a request for money does not fall under the definition of panhandling at all. These are, the ordinance is addressing verbal requests. Panhandling generally is prohibited at five different locations under the ordinance, including bus stops, in any public transportation vehicle or facility, in a vehicle that is parked or stopped on any public street or alley, within 20 feet of an ATM or the entrance to a bank, credit union, or savings and loan, and on private property without the consent of the owner of the property. And the reason for that, again, as we look back at the minutes, was to allow for people who can't, who are in a position or at a place like a bus stop or inside of public transportation who cannot leave quickly if they're being asked for money. Aggressive panhandling is the other component to this ordinance. It is prohibited, and it means one of several different things. It can mean touching the solicited person without the solicited person's consent, intentionally blocking the path of travel of the person being solicited, or intentionally blocking, I'm sorry, intentionally blocking the entrance to any vehicle or building, continuing to solicit or request a donation from a person after that person has refused an earlier request. It also means following or remaining alongside a person who, after being solicited, walks away from the person panhandling, and then finally making any statement, gesture, or communication that would cause a reasonable person to feel threatened, fearful, or compelled. This provision has a penalty section attached to it. It can be between $1 and $1,000 as the maximum, with a jail time of up to 180 days. Court costs in this case, as in any other case, are $63. In our research, the data shows that the fine is usually somewhere between $30 and $200, but $100 is the most common fine. And then, of course, the community service in lieu of paying those fines is available in these cases as well. This chart shows how many times panhandling was cited in the last five years. Again, these numbers really fluctuate year to year. One citation was issued last year in 2019, and that case was dismissed. In Kansas and the Tenth Circuit, we don't have opinions directly addressing panhandling. There is a case cited in the staff memo from the Tenth Circuit. It came out last year, which acknowledges directly that there is no case law in this jurisdiction. Reed versus Town of Gilbert is a U.S. Supreme Court from 2015. That case has been used by some courts in the United States to interpret panhandling laws, even though Reed was not actually about panhandling. In fact, it was about the sign code in a city, but it brought up issues about First Amendment speech and content-based, content-neutral restrictions by the city. And so, some courts, again, not in Kansas, have used at least that U.S. Supreme Court case as precedent to interpret panhandling laws. Again, we have provided the Commission and the public with that chart of other cities and what they're doing with panhandling. There are more cities that do not have panhandling language than camping, but some features of other cities that do actually have panhandling ordinances prohibit aggressive panhandling with language that's very similar to the city of Lawrence's, as well as panhandling at certain locations that's prohibited. And they specifically identify ATM machines certain feet away from an ATM machine or bus stops, for example. Okay, that concludes the overview of what the ordinances say and language from their adoption. I'd be happy to answer questions. Otherwise, I'll pass it over to...
Any questions for Maria?
Oh, I did have one, I'm sorry. In the camping grid you showed us with the number of cases, why were so many dismissed in all the columns?
I'll actually turn that over to the city prosecutor.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Elizabeth Hafoka. I'm the supervising city prosecutor. I did get these numbers from the court records, and out of the 122 dismissals that were shown on the chart, 96 of those were dismissed as part of a plea agreement, which means that they had either additional charges or additional cases, and that this specific illegal camping charge was dismissed as part of a plea of guilty or no contest to other cases and/or other charges. 16 cases were dismissed because, sorry, charges were dismissed because a defendant was not competent to stay in trial. There is no provision in the municipal court to restore a person's competency, so when we have a finding that a person is not competent, we dismiss that case. Because there's no corresponding state statute for this offense, it would not be a situation where we would refer it to the district attorney's office. If they had additional charges or additional cases where there was a corresponding state statute, then we would refer the other charges up to the district attorney's office. And if they chose to file them, they would not file this charge because it doesn't go along with any statute that they can file. Three of the charges were dismissed because the citation was not received by the court prior to the arraignment date. So, because there was no charging complaint, then the judge dismissed that for lack of jurisdiction. One case was dismissed because the defendant died before the case was adjudicated. Three were dismissed because the facts or the situation of the occurrence did not fit the ordinance as charged. So, after a review by the prosecutors, we determined that it wasn't appropriate to move forward. I believe, if my memory serves me correctly, those were situations where the person was close to the commercial district but not actually within the zone, and so it wasn't appropriate to go forward because it wasn't a violation. And then, two were dismissed for lack of evidence, so that could have been either that there weren't witnesses that showed up for trial, or maybe the officer wasn't available or, for some reason, couldn't be called to testify. And then, there was one that was undetermined that happened in 2016 by prosecutors no longer with the office, and there were no notes in that file for me to research, so I do not know. I know that there was an additional case of pedestrian under the influence in a roadway, which was dismissed at the same time, but the reason for that, I cannot tell you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions at this moment?
Yeah. Maria, I appreciate you doing all the research on this. One of the situations I think we have is we have some folks who've been banned from the shelter. How would Wichita handle individuals who have been banned from their shelter? Because it seems that what they're talking about is availability, you know, in a capacity matter, but if there's someone who's been banned and isn't admitted, then where do they, how's that work out?
I actually asked that exact question to the enforcement officer, and they said that has come up previously, and somebody who, they treat that somebody who has been banned or trespassed from the shelter as there being no shelter available.
Okay.
And so, they are not cited with ordinance.
Yeah, thank you. I guess the other thing on the aggressive panhandling, is there overlap with other criminal statutes in some of that conduct?
The short answer is maybe. I'd be happy to review the ones that...
Well, I mean, it seems to me that touching is something that is covered by other laws.
It might be, so...
Might be, okay.
The battery ordinance and statute in Kansas allows battery to occur in one of two ways. One is committing bodily injury on somebody. The second way is to touch them in a rude, insulting, or angry manner. And the ordinance prohibits touching somebody, which could be just to brush their shoulder or to just try to get their attention. That might not rise to rude, insulting, or angry. And so, when I say it might apply, it depends on if somebody was pushed in order to get their attention. That would rise to battery where, in some cases, it might not.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Other questions? All right.
My name is Troy Squire, and I'm a captain with the Lawrence Police Department. Tonight, I'd like to speak just a little bit about our philosophy on enforcing these two ordinances, and maybe share a little bit about the history that has come along with them. Since 2005, a lot has changed for us. Early in these ordinances, we were staffed to a point in which we had dedicated resources to be downtown, patrol on foot, and aggressively seek out folks violating these and other traffic ordinances and law violations. As time has passed, resources have changed, and that historical perspective has gone away. We are now mostly a response-to-complaint agency regarding these complaints, particularly the two in question tonight. If someone does call, we will send resources, but we do not seek it out like we used to. And I think the numbers kind of show that. As far as our philosophy goes, it's been very simple and consistent throughout time. We encourage our officers to use their discretion in doing so. We ask that they provide guidance and warnings and education to folks violating these laws, try to steer them in a direction where they are not going to violate the ordinances that we're being called to enforce, whether it's panhandling or illegal camping. We warn them what will happen if they continue to do that, and inevitably, sometimes those things land with citations or arrests. And so, we have a very, I think, common sense approach to trying to move people in a direction where we want to be. And that's kind of the philosophy with a lot of our officers and the violations that they are seeking to enforce. I have information if you have questions, or I can wait till after Parks and Rec is done.
Any questions? Troy?
Obviously, we had, for example, the aggressive panhandling. I think there's only one charge this last year.
Yeah.
Do you have any statistics on how many times you were called out for aggressive panhandling, and how many, obviously, it only resulted in one charge, but...
Yes, yes, I do. Let me pull these out for you. So, in 2019, calls for panhandling, there were 75 calls for service. There were six self-initiated calls for service in which an officer saw something happening that he felt the need to interject in, for a total of 81 different calls for service. I don't know what the number of arrests on that this year are. We had one aggressive panhandling citation in 2019.
So, out of the 81 calls, only one resulted in actual charge?
And that's for the aggressive panhandling. When we look at the camping, handling calls for service. For the camping calls for service in 2019, there were 123 total calls where we were sent to a location to investigate. There were 48 instances in which the officer saw something or saw a person that had been previously warned in self-initiated activity, for a total of 171. And then, looking at our 2019 numbers, there were 12 citations for illegal camping.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm Derek Rogers, Director of Parks and Recreation. Our staff within Parks and Recreation are guided by our city core values and aspire to fulfill these goals in maintaining our parks and environment, natural areas, and open spaces. We also enhance community pride through beautification of public spaces that meet the diverse needs and expectations of the community. Public parks are designed to provide aesthetically pleasing green spaces where the community can gather for recreation, rest, and leisure. Those experiencing houselessness are part of the community. Our spaces are equitable and inclusive for everyone they use, and they are welcoming for everybody from all walks of life. Our staff are friendly, respectful to all community members that use our parks, services, and take great pride in maintaining our green spaces. They do things to enhance our parks for the community, and in the small details that most of us wouldn't recognize, they go above and beyond what they do, more so than in their job description to make our parks look the way they do. When priorities necessitate, cleaning the campsite after it's been posted and the camper's had at least the minimum time after posting to clean up the site, pick up their belongings, and move, park maintenance crews are reassigned from their regular park duties and tasked with cleaning up what is left behind, disposing of debris, and depending on the location of the site, removing healthy vegetation to get in and out of the area to clean it up. Our staff respond daily to requests from the community to address trees, trash, downlimbs, other issues regarding our parks or trails and multi-use paths and facilities. We also take pride in how nice our parks, facilities, and downtown look. Safety is a concern for our staff. When cleaning up abandoned or vacated campsites, our staff sometimes find needles, glass, open cans, human waste, and other sharp items. When cleaning debris that may be hazardous to parks staff, there are times, besides employees picking it up with their hands and wearing protective gear, we need to use equipment to remove the debris and the trash and the remains. Example of this is a site that we discovered in the woods in Naismith Park. It was probably, staff estimated, maybe a year old, and the materials down there, when they were picking up the clothes, they were disintegrating. There was a blanket, for example, that had been waterlogged and been sinking into the mud, so they had to use a skid steer, an equipment, to get it up and get it out to the trash. How are camps discovered in our parks? We do not seek out and try to find campsites. It's usually by users of the parks, the neighbors, the residents, reporting campsites to police dispatch and to parks administration. Typically, thick wooded park areas where trails tend to be, have had more campers than other areas and other parks within the city. Campsites can have a huge impact on parks they reside in, besides killing the vegetation where the tent had been placed, and the continuous trampling of the vegetation around the area, degradation of land and water quality from trash and human waste, illegally cutting trees, shrubs for fires, and could possibly lead to accidental fires burning in the area. The longer somebody stays at a site, the more stuff that tends to accumulate around these sites, and the impact they have on the environment and the park area. Another factor is just maintaining the space, mowing, irrigating, maintaining the park becomes more difficult with campers residing in the parks. Again, we are complaint-driven and post-sites so that campers have a minimum of 24 hours' notice to move their belongings. Our staff work during the day, and we will only clean up a site during daylight, during the daylight. We address campers respectfully and inform them of they are not allowed to camp in the parks on our and in our public property. Since last fall, we have revised our guidance to be more considerate of those experiencing houselessness. When temperatures are forecast to be below freezing, 32 degrees, unless there was a safety issue for fire, damage to infrastructure, safety of the camper, a law enforcement concern or public safety, then park staff would not disturb the campsite. Tents found at a campsite would not be removed. Because most restrooms during the winter are closed, as we don't want the pipes to freeze, we also placed a couple of porta-johns in high-use park areas for all of the community to use. One of those is by Bureau's Creek Trail in the park off of 15th, high-use area for everyone in the community. And then, another one was over by Sandro Shaw and Berchem Park. This concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Derek? Thank you.
Maria, I did have one question. And so, I know that there was, in one of the ordinances, that the camping was allowed around the shelter. Is that, I think I remember that correctly. And then, I was curious if Wichita had specific spaces designated, or if that was in Wichita. Just what do cities who allow that, what do those locations look like?
I can speak to Wichita, that your question about whether they had a designated area. I did ask that question as well, and there is not a designated area in Wichita. So, if the shelter is full, then camping would be allowed on public property or in the public right-of-way. As far as other cities, that's something I can definitely research if there's interest in looking at that model, but I don't know what the designated areas are specifically. Some ordinances will say, they will name a specific park in the ordinances, but if it's not listed in the ordinance, I haven't reached out to ask what it is, if it's not clear from the language.
And in the permitting language, what information do they collect when that permit is sought?
I...
If you know, sorry.
I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay. I just, I wonder if there is some kind of safety built in there if you know who has the permit to be camping, so that, you know, should something happen, or, you know, you're making sure that, you know, two people with a no-contact order aren't, you know, in the same space, or whatever that might look like. I can see some benefit to that. I can also see some risk associated if there aren't identification, folks don't have some kind of photo identification to do that. But was, do you know if there was a cost associated?
I mean, I, I'm sorry, I really...
No, that's okay.
I don't know. I'd be happy to check into it if there's interest, but I wanted to give a general overview and then kind of dive in a little bit more if there's interest.
Thank you for pulling all of those.
Yeah, sure.
It's a lot of information. Any other questions? Is that all of our presentations? Okay. Then, at this point, we will open it up for public comment. Again, I will read my statement. Everyone has three minutes who wishes to engage in public comment. Please do not engage in audible response to public comment to ensure that everyone in the audience can hear. Public comment is directed toward the Commission to inform discussions on a given topic. Residents who are engaging in public comment regardless of whether we agree or disagree with their statement should feel safe accessing this building and the podium. Not engaging in audible response to public comment will support safe access to the Commission. So, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Hamza. I've come to speak here today for the interest of the houses' population of the city of Lawrence. They are my neighbors, comrades, and friends. As such, I cannot stand the injustice committed against them by the city, specifically in relation to the inhumane measures against so-called illegal camping. Ordinance 14417 is one of the cruelest testaments to the city's viciously anti-homeless interest in recent history. Lobbied and supported by the local bourgeoisie in downtown Lawrence, Inc., ordinances like these were meant to treat the houses as an aesthetic problem so as to easily resolve the primarily monetary concerns of local business owners. These property owners couldn't care less about the struggle of the houseless. They simply wanted to make a quick buck, and the houses were a minor inconvenience in pursuit of said goal. In fact, this ordinance was so unjustifiably cruel that it was a major contributor to Lawrence being named as one of the worst cities in the nation in their treatment of the houseless. Even a cursory examination of the ordinance's text reveals the despicable nature of its intentions. Camping can be construed as a plethora of activities, including setting down blankets, falling asleep, or storing any kind of personal belongings. This permissiveness has given the city carte blanche for draconian enforcement. On numerous occasions, houses' people have been ticketed for falling asleep, lying down on benches, or simply existing within Lawrence. The ordinance forbids camping on both private property and in downtown Lawrence. This is an undue burden upon the houseless, cutting them off from essential support services and making even their proximity to private property a reason for suspicion and arrest. This creates an environment of fear and uncertainty, exacerbating the difficulties of houselessness and making it impossible to live as... and making it impossible to live a secure life. Furthermore, the punishments for any violation of the ordinance are heartbreaking. Housespeople could be forced to pay exorbitant fees up to $1,000 or face six months in jail, all this for the crime of daring to make a good life for themselves and their community. It is because I find these policies of the Lawrence City Commission criminal against the houseless, a violation of fundamental human dignity and otherwise morally repugnant, that I call upon the city commission to take immediate public and accountable action to protect its most vulnerable citizens. I demand that the city commission schedule a vote on this issue no later than one week from today. At that time, ordinances 14417 and 14418 must be fully repealed by unanimous vote of the city commission. There will be no replacement to the policy, and the city will stop any and all enforcement of it. The city commission is morally obligated to respond to the needs of its citizens. Any action in violation of the collective will of those assembled today is an unacceptable and indefensible breach of the public trust. I'd like to finish my statement by thanking the city commission for being so utterly incompetent at their jobs that basically anything I could say here would sound pretty good.
I'm Alex Rodriguez, you all know me. Just a few weeks ago, I met with two lawyers from the American Civil Liberties Union and five city officials, including city attorneys, about the investigation the ACLU has been conducting regarding the unconstitutionality of city ordinances that criminalize the houseless. The meeting lasted less than half an hour, and to be frank, I left feeling pissed off. The city officials denied that any camps have been bulldozed in recent months and claimed that the police have been directed not to enforce ordinance 14417, which I told them was a blatant lie because I know several houseless individuals who have been chased out of their camps and whose property has been destroyed by the Parks and Recreation Department and police in the last few months alone. Despite the constant denials from the city, I maintained hope that the ACLU would be able to convince the city that a repeal of the ordinances would be beneficial for the entire community. A few days later, the ACLU sent another letter to the city government vocalizing their support for a complete repeal and offering examples of other cities' ordinances and policies that could easily be enacted here. My hopes were higher than they have been in a while. I felt that with the complete legal support of a group like the ACLU, we could convince the city to change its policies for the betterment of everyone in the community. However, my hopes were dashed when the city attorney's office released their agenda item report, which you all just heard, regarding the ordinances in question. It blatantly lied and buckled down on the claim that no camps have been bulldozed, and also made it clear that the city government sees nothing wrong with its continued and in many ways escalated war against the houseless. The report admits that the Ninth Circuit Court of the United States ruled anti-camping laws unconstitutional when enforced in cities with insufficient sheltering, yet attempts to excuse Lawrence's ordinance because it only applies to certain portions of the city. This, to me and many others, is clearly a form of segregation. When I confronted the city officials about this during my meeting with them, they did not deny it. How could they, when the facts clearly prove their intent? In the report, the city attorney's office claimed that only 12 charges of illegal camping were made throughout all of 2019, when the facts on the ground proved this number to be woefully low. More camps were destroyed last year than the 12 claimed by the city, not to mention countless instances of harassment and abuse by the police, especially towards poor black and native folks, that were never recorded because formal charges were never made. Several older gentlemen I know have received more than 50 tickets each simply for falling asleep in public. Even when no citation is issued, charges are dropped or conviction is not reached, camps and properties were and still are destroyed by the police and Parks and Recreation. Why do city agencies and police record investigations and charges but not bulldozings? Why does property destruction by the government not qualify as something worth recording? The simple fact of the matter is that the city is not above lying to the public to maintain its facade of progressiveness. Depending on how this meeting tonight goes and how the scheduled vote on the ordinances will go, the ACLU investigation may continue. However, to me, it has become more than clear that the city commission does not give a damn about the houseless. If you, the city commission, want to prove that you care about the citizens of their community, you can start by completely repealing city ordinances 14417 and 14418, as both the ACLU and members of the community, housed and houseless, demand. Anything less will only...
Thank you, Alex.
...that what I and so many others know, that this city wants its houseless dead.
I'm Stuart Luckman. I have come to speak here today for the interest of the houseless population of the city of Lawrence. They are my neighbors, my comrades, and my friends. As such, I cannot stand the injustices committed against them by the city, specifically in relation to the carceral policies of Lawrence and the broader Douglas County area. The criminal justice system in Lawrence is fixated on profiling and punishing its most vulnerable inhabitants. When ordinances like the ones you are currently examining exist in any form, it acts as an excuse for the cops to systematically discriminate and arrest entire groups of people. Make no mistake, policies of these kinds are terminally carceral. They cannot be modified for greater precision or accuracy. In the quest for those who are truly guilty, so long as they exist, they modify the beliefs and desires of the people in control of their enforcement. If given a set of illegal behaviors and a group of people to those behaviors allegedly show up in, discrimination beyond the scope of the law happens no matter what the constraints are imposed upon it. There are no perfectly impartial interpreters of legislation, and even if they were, policies like these are inherently unethical because their motivating purpose is discrimination. This fact can be empirically proven. Cops ruthlessly enforce these evil ordinances against the houseless, with one person receiving more than 50 tickets for simply falling asleep. There can be no ethical justification for these actions. Their motivations lie purely in self-interest. Whether to fulfill quotas or create cheap labor due to community service hours, carceral actions can be best explained by their economic motivations, as demonstrated by the numerous stories among the houseless community of these instances. The municipality acquires resources and fees, labor power, and work for the criminal justice system. Cops get to make self-fulfilling prophecies due to overpolicing, making their job much easier. Even the county now has a stake due to the expansion of the jail. Locking up the houseless would suit the county's plan of jail expansion by justifying the exorbitant price tag of $30 million in new inmates. The entire legal scheme of Lawrence is structured around persecuting the houseless. It is because I find these policies of the Lawrence City Commission criminal against the houseless, a violation of fundamental human dignity and otherwise morally repugnant, that I call upon the city commission to take immediate and public accountable action to protect its most vulnerable citizens. I demand that the city commission schedule a vote on this issue no later than one week from today. At that time, ordinances 14417 and 14418 must be fully repealed by a unanimous vote of the city commission. There will be no replacement to the policy, and the city will stop any and all enforcement of it. The city commission is morally obligated to respond to the needs of its citizens. Any action in violation of the collective will of those assembled today is an unacceptable and indefensible breach of the public trust. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Isaac, and just like my colleagues earlier, I'm also here today to speak in interest of the houses' population of the city of Lawrence. They are my neighbors, comrades, and friends, and as such, I cannot stand the injustices committed against them by the city, specifically in relation to the inhumane measures against so-called aggressive panhandling. As Hamza earlier said, ordinance 14418 is one of the cruelest testaments of the city's viciously anti-homeless interest in recent history, and it was lobbied and supported by the bourgeoisie in downtown Lawrence, Inc. The aforementioned ordinance uses a variety of vague terms and permissive contexts to allow loose interpretation by the cops who enforce the policy. Specifically, in 2F, housespeople can be charged simply for making any statement, gesture, or action that makes people feel fearful. The language utilized here allows a broad scope of actions to be construed as in violation of the ordinance. Existence becomes criminal as a result of the ordinance. Worse still, the ordinance goes on to list number of locations where panhandling in general is prohibited. This includes bus stops, public transportation, banks, credit unions, ATMs, and financial institutions. By cutting the houses, by cutting the houses' population off from some of the most public infrastructure and the easiest institutions they can run running from, the city of Lawrence is telling them that they cannot care less about the houseless. The city is more interested in protecting the feelings of bankgoers than the material needs of the houseless. It is because I find these policies in Lawrence City Commission criminal against the houseless, a violation of fundamental human dignity and other rights morally repugnant, that I call upon the city commission to take immediate public and accountable action to protect its most vulnerable citizens. I demand that the city commission schedule a vote on this issue no later than one week from today. At that time, ordinances 14417 and 14418 must be fully repealed by unanimous vote of the city commission. There will be no replacement to the policy, and the city will stop any and all enforcement of it. The city commission is morally obligated to respond to the needs of its citizens. Any action in violation of the collective will of those assembled today is an unacceptable and indefensible breach of the public trust. Thank you.
Hi, Susan Ford, houseless. Been very sick, so I'll make this brief. I've been bulldozed four times, and my stuff wasn't removed. My stuff was buried, around your tent, buried, okay? Six months ago, buried, okay? And I'm deep in the woods. I'm not in any park where anybody's gonna, I'm gonna bother anybody, all right? When I got sick this last week, they had to come in and basically carry me out because I got so sick, but I'm not anywhere where I'm bothering anybody. But they didn't tell me, because it's, but I stay out of the way. I have never been in trouble in this city. I have not got one ticket, I have not got one money. I don't get in trouble. I obey these rules. I keep my camp clean, but yet I've been buried four times, all right? I have a friend that, he's been ticketed, he's still doing community service, working off his tickets for illegal camping, for falling asleep. He's 67 years old. What do you do when you're houseless and you're 67, but fall asleep on a park bench? It's what you do. My god, my grandmother did it. God.
I'm a houseless citizen here in Lawrence, Kansas. Thank you all for being here today, and I want to thank, you know, my brothers and sisters, because that's what they are to me, they're my family. When I became homeless first in 2008, right here in Lawrence, Kansas, I learned that these dysfunctional, crazy, loving, caring, and beautiful people were my family. They're my brothers and sisters. God asks of mankind, the first three questions God asks, where? Where are you? The second one is, what are you doing? And the third one was, where is your brother? So that's my question to you, is where are you? What are you doing? And where? Where's your brother? Where's your sister? I don't stand here on my behalf, but on the behalf of my brothers and sisters, who are out there right now, cold, hungry. They just want a safe place to stay. They want to go to sleep warm tonight with a full belly, just like you. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Dear Commissioners, I respect your decision to hold a discussion about ordinances 14-417 and 14-418, and given the opportunity to contribute to this discussion, and all these wonderful people now have the chance to show you the true nature of these policies. The time spent putting together an investigation into these policies shows some signs of cooperation. At least, I would like to think so, but in the report, I found not a report on how these ordinances are enforced in practice and how they impact the community in objective, material ways. Instead, I found a lot of excuses. For example, an excuse that 14417 is not an outright ban, even if the zones were enforced as described, which they often aren't. The effect remains the same, to kick houseless people away from access to resources and transportation centers, away from foot traffic where they could panhandle, et cetera. The message you send instead is your kind is what is not welcome here. On the excuse that the total number of charges that invoke ordinances 14417 and 14418 are low, this data that is provided is a blatant cover-up. The idea that only 12 people were charged or were bulldozed in 2019 is just false. The idea that only one person was charged with panhandling, or aggressive panhandling, as you say, in 2019 is just cartoonishly false. This is a clear attempt to brush police-related incidents, including the crime of bulldozing, under the rug. On the examples set by other communities referenced in the report, it's one thing to point out written policies and compare, and another thing to compare lived experiences or objective conditions. Perhaps instead of focusing on which legislation is prettier or tougher, focus instead on those who must live with the consequences, because the way I heard it, Lawrence is among the cities in Kansas that treats its houseless the worst. What I ask is this, that the city commission schedule a vote on this issue no later than one week from today. At that time, we call for ordinances 14417 and 14418 to be fully repealed by unanimous vote of the city commission. There's to be no replacement to the policy, and the city will stop any and all enforcement of it. Thank you.
I don't know if I have to sign in twice, but I know that I was really here. So, I just have a few short things to say about houselessness. Just a reminder that we're all only a few steps away from being houseless. All it takes is a severe medical issue, or domestic abuse situation, or anything else, like those are a couple of severe examples, but there's lots of things that can lead to houselessness. And in Lawrence, with our higher cost of living, makes it an even more complicated issue compared to other places in Kansas. Our minimum wage is not sufficient for the living expenses that it takes to live here, particularly with some of the development that's happened in higher-end apartment living as opposed to the lower end. And then, you know, a couple of facts is that 44% of the nationally houseless are employed. They have a job, but it's not enough. 12% are veterans. And last that I checked, .7 to 1% of our national population is actually houseless. So I just wanted to reiterate those facts, and we might like to think that this is a rare occurrence, but it actually isn't. Thanks.
Thank you.
The city of Lawrence has absolutely no excuse for its utter incompetence.
Can you say your name, please, for the record?
It's Margaret. Incompetence in planning for the 2019 and 2020 season. Warned numerous times since October of last year, the city commission turned up their noses when faced with the writing on the wall. This was an extremely reckless move. With no recent policies on the books with how to deal with the oncoming cold weather problem, the houseless and impoverished faced the very serious possibility that they could suffer and die from hypothermia. A 2018 study in New York found that 75% of people being treated for cold-related illness were outside. 50% were homeless, and 25% had no heating at home. These risk factors clearly indicate that the most marginalized suffered the most. However, the study also argues that the vast majority of deaths from the cold happened during periods without extreme cold temperatures. Given the combination of poor winter weather, sheltering by private institutions, absolutely zero prioritization by the city commission, and your refusal to hear us until the January 14th meeting, this kind of behavior was unacceptable. It must be changed during, it must be changed in the future. Winter is not the only period of extreme weather the city needs to worry about. During the summer, extreme heat can pose just as much of a problem for the unsheltered population of Lawrence. The ordinances the city is considering right now will only exacerbate these environmental problems. By cracking down on illegal camping, the city will deny, will be denying vulnerable people the respite from the heat they require to survive and thrive during the harsh summer months. Furthermore, the expanding impacts of climate change will hit these communities even harder. For those of us with shelter, the problems of extreme temperature are distant. For the houseless, your draconian policies could mean the difference between suffering from dehydration and heat stroke, or being able to shelter themselves, and save in the knowledge that they will not be disrupted. Should I sign it again?
It's up to you. Sheri, do you have an opinion on that? Okay.
All right. Hello again, my name is Lacey Rowe. I want to say that repealing these ordinances would be a really great first step towards not making the issue of homelessness worse, but I'm also hoping that the next step might be to actually address the problem, the root causes of temporary and chronic homelessness. In 2005, the City of Lawrence Task Force on Homeless Services released a report recommending that the local government be actively involved in addressing and preventing homelessness, and further recommended that we develop our own 10-year plan to end chronic homelessness. That didn't happen. We no longer have that task force, and a lot of the information that was linked in that report is no longer available online. I was still in elementary school at the time when that report was released, so I don't know what went wrong or why none of that happened. But imagine where we could have been now if back... But imagine where we could have been now if back then, our city had just said, "It is unacceptable for us to turn a blind eye to members of our community left out on the streets, and it is unacceptable for us to ignore their suffering." Perhaps we could have been among the pioneers of successful city programs for others to learn from. Perhaps we wouldn't have solved the problem, but we could have been so much closer by just staying engaged in that conversation and continuing to troubleshoot how to make our policies better. Of course, that's called innovation. You gather all the information you can, you design solutions, and you either tweak them or design new solutions based on what you learn. That's part of the basic scientific method, and it's how we progress as a society and civilization. We missed our opportunity to be pioneers. The problem is still here, and it's actually grown worse because we didn't do anything to slow it down or prevent it. And trust me, we're paying these, those costs. We're bearing the human cost and the fiscal cost, and it is not distributed equitably. The two thousand five report that I mentioned actually states that in the bigger picture for addressing and preventing poverty, fifty percent of financial resources should be given to preventing homelessness. Today, despite our city's low unemployment rate, the poverty rate in Lawrence is twenty-two percent, which is forty-seven percent higher than, than the national average. Right now, we have a new opportunity. We have an opportunity to start again. We have the opportunity to make this a priority because we know that this problem isn't going away. We have an opportunity to learn from several great examples of cities with successful, successful policies, like Rockford, Illinois, or Lancaster, Pennsylvania. We have an opportunity to remove the burden of punitive policies on city resources and taxpayers, to promote the health of our community, and to help our neighbors. I hope that this commission will take this opportunity. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Stella Lee Higgins. Criminalizing homelessness is cruel and unlawful, according to the ACLU, the Ninth Circuit Appellate Court, the United Nations Special Reporter, and various human rights entities. Our city, and actually, our entire county, only has one shelter, and that shelter got kicked to the edge of town where it's far from city services, it's hard to get transportation, and it's also a warehouse that wasn't designed for people. This shelter is an independent, underfunded, non-profit, not a branch of government, and it's not going to solve the issue of homelessness by itself. They're providing shelter to the most vulnerable of our vulnerable populations, along with case management, to help each person find stability, but they can't address the root causes of homelessness, or even solve it or meaningfully slow it down. The shelter is always at or near full capacity. Even when it had higher capacity, it stayed full, and that shows that houselessness is pervasive in our community, and that shelter services are an ongoing need. And being on the streets is a traumatizing experience, and staying at a shelter with very little privacy is also a traumatizing experience. This is something that we need to recognize and not trivialize. People who are likely to experience homelessness are also likely, have also likely experienced previous trauma or PTSD stemming from domestic violence, and childhood abuse, or military service. And in order to help people achieve stability, it's important to focus on their mental, and physical, and emotional health. The problem is not going away by itself. No one else is going to solve this problem for our city. We need to repeal harmful policies and enact strong policies with leadership from local officials, and collaborate across sectors in our city to help our neighbors. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Leah Perry. I am the board chair at the Lawrence Community Shelter. I just wanted to kind of piggyback on something Lacey said, because it's something that, when I talk to members of the community about home, houselessness and the shelter, something that has come up a lot is that this is a problem that one organization, or even a handful of organizations, is not going to be able to solve by itself. It's something that, the, the whole community needs to be engaged in, and, and I think that we need to get back to a place where somehow we're bringing stakeholders back together to talk about this. We just saw tonight how that can happen with the Sanctuary Alliance, and that was a great success. I feel like we need to try to somehow replicate that success with this issue. I don't know if that means pulling this, the task force back, back together. I am very happy to participate, but there's a lot of people and a lot of voices that we're not hearing in this room. And a lot of that is folks who are staying at the shelter, folks who are camping. There's a lot of people that, that we need to be engaging with, that, that we're not right now, that we need to hear from, and I'd be really excited to talk more about that if anybody's interested. But I appreciate you working on the ordinance. As far as the ordinance, I do think that work needs to be done on the ordinance. I've, I've heard from a lot of folks out at the shelter, things that have happened to them while they've been camping, that frankly, to me, it's immoral what we're, what we're doing to some of these, these members of our community, and I do hope that the commission takes a good, hard, long look at this ordinance. Thank you.
Hi again, I'm Maureen Harries, and I just wanted to say I'm really glad that it seems like we're taking steps to fix the situation where we have far too few affordable homes on one hand, and ordinances that criminalize individuals for trying to survive in the absence of affordable housing on the other. Until we have better housing solutions, we also need to eliminate the caps on emergency shelters and charges that make it, emergency shelters too difficult to sustain. And, and as others have said, instead of criminalizing homelessness, I look forward to seeing Lawrence create strong, lasting bridges between existing social services and the city, so that everyone who lives here is able to do well here. Success stories involve collaborative approaches that engage local government, local nonprofits, and local businesses. Solutions must also be driven by good policies, and it must be driven by good leadership. I think this is the ethical thing to do, but I also believe this is how we strengthen our community. When we honor everyone's participation, we become stronger, because more participation means more creativity, a better ability to understand ourselves than others, and a greater ability to innovate and develop new solutions in a wide range, to a wide range of issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Caitlin McDermid. I live at one thousand Mississippi. I've lived in Lawrence for fourteen years. I know the commissioners will be considering whether or not to change or repeal section fourteen four-one-seven and four-one-eight. I am here in support of doing away with these ordinances or drastically changing them. Fourteen four-one-eight addresses aggressive panhandling. In my fourteen years of living in Lawrence, having an office downtown and walking mass on a daily basis, I can remember two instances which may have fallen under the ordinances' definition of aggressive panhandling. In contrast, I can remember many more instances where I was catcalled, harassed, and intimidated by college-aged men in singles or in groups in the downtown area. It is my opinion that this ordinance unfairly targets a group of community members whose only crime is being poor, ill, and/or traumatized. It is my opinion that we have ordinances on the books against assault and battery, and in absence of these actions, our community members should not be allowed to exist and live, should be allowed to exist and live as we all do in our community. Continuing to treat the homeless as the problem, rather than poverty, illness, and trauma as the problems, is less than humane. Fourteen four-one-seven is the illegal camping ordinance. It appears to me that when camps are being cleared, that the concern is trash, sanitation, fire risk, and that those sheltering there are in parks or in public lands after closing times. An avid hiker with my dog and a contributor of items to ease these campers' challenges, I have seen where many of these camps are or were. I feel like the city could mitigate some of these concerns by supplying dumpsters, portable toilets, and establishing fire rings. I feel like there are areas, areas which are already used as campsites, which could be established as camping areas with basic services. Continuing to criminalize the poor and houseless efforts to stay alive does not serve this community. Adding citations, court costs, criminal records, jail time, does not serve these community members or the community at large. Providing additional shelter options in all seasons serves our community. I urge the commissioners to find compassion and decriminalize these lifesaving actions that our most vulnerable community members make in order to survive. I urge the commissioners and other agencies here to invest the time to establish a long-range, comprehensive, multiple-agency-supported plan to reduce and eventually end homelessness in our city. Thank you.
Jenna Growth, Lawrence resident. Fifteen years ago, the city listened to people concerned about campfires and business. Our commissioners responded by creating jail time and fines for camping and panhandling in certain situations, including peaceful panhandling at bus stops, buses, and near ATMs. Regardless of intent, this has, this has led to deepen divides between privileged people and the rest of the community. While city code does not ban all instances of panhandling, it creates severe restrictions. These restrictions require those who are houseless, who often act, lack access to internet and transportation, the responsibility to look up and find areas where they can go to practice activities they need to survive. And our camping ban in conjunction with park hours criminalizes sleeping for some residents. I also have firsthand experience with the panhandling rule and how it is divisive. In twen, in two thousand eight, a police officer gave me a warning for aggressive panhandling. I had not been panhandling, but merely had just spoken to a man who was out asking for food. Despite this fact, the police officer made up a guilt-by-association warning and lectured me about finding better friends. This is what happens when our city code creates punitive responses to hunger. It sends the message that it's okay to further stigmatize and isolate people in need. Houselessness and hunger are complex problems that require complex solutions. Instead of continuing to criminalize survival behavior, let's use Article twelve of the Kansas Constitution to come up with new ways to tackle the cause of houselessness and hunger.
That's as high as it's gonna go, I guess.
You can raise it, there's, there should be a little arrow button down there.
Evening again. I'm Joel Gallegos. Addressing and fighting the issue of homelessness is a lot cheaper than leaving people out on the streets. Studies have shown that simply housing people can reduce the number of homelessness at a lower cost to society than leaving them without homes. For example, the Central Florida Commission on Homelessness found issuing costs, found housing costs about ten thousand per person per year while leaving them homeless costs law enforcement, jails, hospitals, and other community services around thirty-one thousand per person per year. Furthermore, many cities have successfully built tiny home villages run and managed by the homeless folks living in them. A lot of cities, not just big cities, but many that could be similar to Lawrence, participate in a program called Built for Zero. These civ, these cities have eliminated homelessness among veterans, and if, and a few have successfully eliminated chronic homelessness altogether. Rockford, Illinois, has a plan to stop chronic and temporary homelessness by the end of the, this year. Why is this not a goal for Lawrence? Why can't we implement similar programs when there are many great examples? Let's stop enforcing cruel policies that criminalize homelessness and start focusing on humane solutions. And just to echo on what many, many have said before me, it'd be great if we had a similar dialogue, like with Sanctuary Alliance. Fostering that communication between the community and the commission bears a lot of good goals and clearly communicates the issues amongst us. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kristy Hill, and since December fifteenth, I've been the coordinator of the Lawrence Emergency Winter Shelter. The goal of the shelter is to provide a safe, warm, peaceful space for people without housing to stay overnight this winter. We are open from eight AM to, eight PM to seven AM each night when the nighttime temperatures are thirty-two degrees and below. Here's the Lawrence Emergency Winter Shelter by numbers. We exist completely on financial and in-kind donations and lots of volunteers. Besides paying Mia Stipin to coordinate the project, all of the donation money has been used to buy materials and meet the needs of the guests that stay with us. This project was not, has not asked for city or county money, but if we did, and I were to calculate a small part of the cost to pay four staff members per night from December first to March thirty-first, plus pay a coordinator, we might be looking at around forty-seven thousand dollars. For the forty nights that we have been open, we have served fifty-nine different homeless community members. Our average number of guests have been twenty. Our largest number one evening was forty-three, which was the Monday, a Martin Luther King holiday, when the nighttime temps were five degrees. That night, forty-three people in this community decided that sleeping on a yoga mat in a sleeping bag on a hard floor in a church was a better alternative than where they were going to be sleeping were we not open. We've taken advantage of the volunteer spirit of sixty-six people in this community to provide overnight supervision. Fifty-nine of them have volunteered more than twice, which should tell you something. If these numbers don't convince you that we have a need in this community for a second tier of support for folks facing homelessness in the winter, I don't know what, what would. If you read the paper or the Lawrence Winter Shelter Facebook page, you know we had a partnership with First United Methodist Church. Our, our relationship with them ended on January twenty-fourth. Because the winter temperatures were so dangerously cold, the number of folks seeking safe, warm place to sleep increased threefold from early in the month. Because the city had an ordinance that caps the number of people religious organizations can shelter at fifteen, understandably, First United was concerned that we were not holding to the number set by the ordinance. I believe that cities have to have and enact ordinances for the safety and well-being of citizens, but this ordinance seems to do the opposite. I simply could not turn away people, number sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and eight degrees, and I know none of you would have either. We were in a space that hosted over three hundred community people for Christmas dinner. My purpose in speaking tonight is one of education for you, as city commissioners, to share the data. Fifty-nine different individuals, sixty-six volunteers. Wednesday night, tomorrow, will be a low of seven. I've exchanged some emails with you and hope to encourage you to come and meet some of the folks who are volunteering and staying.
Thank you.
My name is Dennis Cox. I'm here to speak on behalf of Karen Frick. She couldn't be here tonight, she had a scheduling conflict. She has, however, composed and sent a, a letter to the City Commission and also the County Commission. But she wanted me to read the letter to you as part of this work session. We are asking that the City Commission consider modifying the ordinance that defines the limit on how many of our community members who are homeless can be sheltered in a church each night. The suggestions are, one, increase allowable numbers to include fifteen to thirty-five people during the winter months of November, December, January, February, and March. Two, eliminate the ordinance altogether. Both of these outcomes allow more people to get inside at night during winter. Douglas County and Lawrence needs a second tier of shelter support for adults during the winter months. Without the Lawrence Emergency Winter Shelter Project, the Lawrence Community Shelter would be the only game in town for this group of people. Last night, the temperature was forty-three degrees outside, but tomorrow... Last night, the temperature was 43 degrees outside, but tomorrow morning, the temperature will be 18 degrees. Frostbite can occur within 30 minutes when the temperatures are 18. We continue to hope that another larger church space might open up to accommodate the emergency winter shelter to finish February and March. Thank you for all actions you have taken and you may take in addressing our homeless citizens' need for shelter in winter. Sincerely, Karen Frick.
I just want to, in the little time that I have, to finish up with Kristi was saying to you about the emergency shelter we had to open. I misspoke at a meeting previously, and I apologize. I'm very encouraged by this leadership that we have, and I believe we can come to understanding that people that don't have homes are just as valuable as those of us who do. These gaps that exist are inhumane, and they need to be addressed immediately. The two things I'd like to make actionable items in the future with your help is, one, to do away with the 15-person limit to churches that was created for family promise. That ordinance actually passed five or six months after family promise opened, but the newspaper didn't report on it, and no one got upset, so they were able to do good work. The second actual item is I would like to bring together the people necessary to take these issues we're talking about tonight in earnest and look to create general line-item budget items between the city and the county so that these true emergencies, these true needs for people to survive, are addressed as our first priority. I know you all care, but we have to turn the game around to where things that are nice for us in the city and the county come after the things that people need just to survive. Thank you.
Both of the ordinances the city is considering today deal directly with the segregationist policy brutality enforced by the ruling class of the city. The restriction of movement imposed by these ordinances has a disproportionate impact on the houseless community's ability to access resources vital to their survival. The Dare Center, Link, Winter Shelters, public transportation, and other integral infrastructure are all concentrated downtown. However, this is the area most heavily policed and dealt with by the ordinances. They actively discourage people from locating themselves close to the support they need and prevent them from acquiring resources necessary for survival while there. Cutting the most marginalized in society off from networks of support sends the chilling message that Lawrence wants to actively hinder their survival by any means necessary. I describe this activity as segregation not because it is a convenient rhetorical device, but rather because it is the actual modus operandi of the city in its policy. Nationally speaking, more than 50% of the homeless population are people of color. Lawrence follows this disturbing trend as the population of indigenous people in this city are houseless at drastically higher rates. When the city of Lawrence enforces these ordinances, not only are they committing an egregious act of segregation against the impoverished, but they are quite literally enforcing a system of racial segregation. By making it the official policy of the city to stop the most oppressed from accessing public goods, residing in public spaces, or simply existing in a manner the city dislikes, Lawrence is depriving them of their constitutional guarantees and continuing the long legacy of discrimination by local governments in the United States. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Zeke. I really want to believe that you care about Lawrence, about the people in it, and about their well-being, because it sucks to actually live in a place where you all don't care. And I want to believe that you all are trying your best, but your actions so far give no evidence of that. Ordnances 14417, 14418, and your earlier refusal to fully fund the shelter throughout the entire year have damaged our community. There are real people who are really hurting because of your actions and inactions. Taking the boot off of someone's neck isn't showing you care, but at least it's ending actively malicious behavior. Repealing these ordinances and fully funding the shelter throughout the year wouldn't show that you care, but at least it would suggest that you aren't being actively malicious. I would like to talk just briefly about Terry. Commissioner Finkeldie. Previously, you said you already know about Terry's situation, the gentleman who lost his spot at the community shelter due to lack of funding and had to live on the street. Terry had to stay outside during this winter. He has no money. He has no house. He's just trying to make whatever he can work. He got frostbite and gangrene in his feet this winter. He's in LMH now because of decisions you all have made. This is not some abstract force of evil. These are results of specific decisions you have participated in. Right now, Terry is trying to get a fundraiser up and going to cover his medical expenses. I'm gonna give what I can to help Terry out because he's a member of this community, and I hope you all have some ounce of dignity, or at least guilt, to find it necessary in yourselves to help this person that you specifically have hurt. The tickets, fines, and jail time from these ordinances have also been horrific for houseless community members. People's camps are getting bulldozed by the city, and their possessions are getting destroyed. Houseless people also obviously cannot afford the tickets that come along with these ordinances. They're forced to either go to jail and perform labor, or they're forced into performing community service for the city for the crime of not having a house. People have gotten written up for things as small as covering up with a blanket outside in the winter. This city is currently under investigation by the ACLU for its heinous treatment of its own community members. I saw the report, and I heard it earlier, that the manager and the lawyers put together about this. The main takeaway is that they plan on doing nothing. They suggest that nothing needs to change, and it's all actually fine. They say you don't even enforce it much anyways. For the people who have been hurt by this, I can tell you that the enforcement means a hell of a lot to them. The conclusion of the report was that the city needs to build safe, healthy, and welcoming neighborhoods. The report could have saved a lot of time by saying what it already meant. The report's suggested action is to continue to cleanse the city of houseless people because the city doesn't want to scare off customers downtown by reminding anyone that systemic poverty exists in Lawrence. I ask, please, please fully repeal these ordinances and end the pain they have caused. No half-measures, no, oh, it only applies over here, no, oh, we'll just suggest to not enforce it. And please, on a side note, fully fund the shelter for the rest of the year and not just till spring. This would be the bare minimum to show not that you care, but that you are capable of getting to a point where you care. Thank you for your time.
Hi. I'm Chris Flowers. Last week, I brought up the ordinance limiting the number of guests at 15 for churches running temporary shelters. In the commission items part of the meeting, I believe one of the commissioners, Commissioner Finkeldie, asked if that ordinance could be looked at tonight, and I believe the city manager said it could. Yet tonight, it's not an ordinance we're actually looking at, I don't think. I think it's just the other two. And I was just wondering, how come we're not also talking about the ordinance that limits the guest allowed at temporary shelters based on the request last week during the commission items part? Then also, when it comes to panhandling, would the cops enforce the panhandling ordinance against Girl Scouts selling cookies the same way they would a homeless person selling $5 pencils? I have a feeling they might enforce ordinances harder on the homeless. Also, y'all didn't give enough money to the community shelter so they don't have enough spaces for everyone. What else are the homeless to do but camp? So your policy is not to give enough money to the shelter, let people live on the streets, but have ordinances in place that make it illegal to camp. That just sounds kind of crazy to me. And also, if the commission decides to keep these anti-camping ordinances, then I'm fully expecting the commission to fully fund the shelter next budget season. And just the last gentleman talked about how the city says it hardly enforces the ordinances, but if the city's saying they hardly ever enforce the ordinances, why not just get rid of the ordinances altogether since they're hardly being enforced?
Again, I will ask for no audible response to public comment. Any other public comment? Okay, we'll bring it back up to the commission. So our job tonight is to direct staff as appropriate. The church ordinance was brought up, and I know that there was a memo included with our materials for this meeting on that issue, so I think if we wanted to discuss that, we could as well.
You know, I do think, obviously, I've been involved with the winter shelter and family promise. I was on the planning commission at the time. The family promise ordinance was enacted, and the 15-person was put into place as a compromise because family promise had a 15-person van, and so they figured we didn't need any more than 15, because that's all we could bring back and forth on family promise. And that's how that number came about, was based upon the size of the van that was used to bring people from a church to the dayhouse. Certainly, as we've been involved in the winter shelter, the need is much, much greater than that, and I certainly think it's that ordinance we should look at and we should change. That being said, I certainly agree with a lot of the comments here tonight that, you know, we need a much more comprehensive review of this. I mean, even having people sleep on the floor of a church is not what we are striving for here in this community. And, you know, I mean, you know, you talk about the camping ordinance, you know, to say that it's, we should make it legal for people to camp, that's one thing, but really, why should they be camping at all? Why shouldn't they have a place to stay? Why shouldn't they have a place to have and not be houseless in the first place? I mean, if our ultimate goal is to let people camp, we're falling down. That's not what our goal should be. Our goal should be to get people housed. And, you know, Rockford, Illinois was mentioned tonight, and many other cities have the housing first. As we embark on the strategic plan, a lot of the cities have that in the strategic plan, a goal to end homelessness, a goal to end houselessness. And that takes effort, and that takes work, but we'll see how the strategic planning process goes. But I certainly think it's a worthy goal to have, and it's a much, much bigger goal than, like I said, allowing people to camp. I think that's setting the bar way too low. So, you know, I certainly think there's, I do think the idea of a comprehensive approach, the idea of getting people together to work on this issue, you know, we've talked about it from the winter shelter side, from the community shelter side, working with Renee, with the family promise, you know, it's a comprehensive solution that has to be found, but it's gonna take a lot of people working together, a lot of commitment from the city, from the county, from the nonprofits, from the community. But I think it's a worthy goal to have and something we need to take part in.
I appreciate your involvement in the genesis of this ordinance with regard to the 15. I wasn't aware of that, so I appreciate, you know, your leadership then and your leadership now. I think, you know, trying to work to the second-tier emergency shelter is a worthwhile goal. And I think, as you say, the city, the county, the churches, the community, we all need to, you know, try to replicate the success that we've had with the sanctuary policy, you know, the immigration policies that we've had. So I look forward to that conversation.
Yeah, Brad, I appreciate what you've said, and I do agree that we're falling down if this is the bar we want to meet. I think we definitely need to, you know, I'm open to revisiting the 15 limit. I think that's obvious why it was done, and obviously, that needs to change now potentially. So, you know, I'm more than willing to have discussions in that regard, and I do appreciate the model that was set when we worked with Sanctuary Alliance. It definitely was a collaborative effort, and that's how this process should go. We've done it with the Sanctuary Alliance. We did it with the Bodyworks. You remember the Bodyworks ordinance, where staff actually sat down with those who would be potentially regulated and came up with an ordinance that both sides could agree to? And that's where we're at, I think, with a lot of these community issues, these social issues. And so I'm more than obviously willing and open to that idea, and think it's definitely necessary.
So am I correct in understanding the memo regarding the 15 within a church with five people there, volunteers or whatever, that there is the opportunity to apply for a special use permit that would increase that number? Is that correct, or no?
Correct. There's a, apologies. There is a requirement if it's accessory to religious assemblies in the kingdom that way, but you can also apply for a special use permit for temporary shelter. That's an option that's available in the code. Are certain standards have to be met with that item? It goes through, but it is an option. It's an accessory to religious assembly or special use if it's a temporary shelter.
So some of those were like fire doors and other fire-related regulations and things like that?
Correct. One of the big ones is usually the building code, because the requirements for showers and lavatories to be in the space, there's a number that is usually associated per occupant for an overnight occupancy. That's usually, the fire code and the building code are the two key items there.
Okay. And is it, not asking you to presume, but maybe you have an idea off the top of your head, are most churches going to meet those regulations?
I do not know.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just curious.
I can jump in and say, at the time, I was on the planning commission again when we brought this up, and, you know, there was certainly discussion, you know, from the fire department, from, you know, other groups, that 15 was still too many, you know, if you didn't have showers, if you didn't have, I mean, your family promise is in, you know, we use 16 different churches, and they all have different setups, they all have different sizes, they all have different fire doors, they all have different, and clearly at the time, you know, the fire department and others and city staff, you know, would have preferred to have, you know, one location with all those things done, but the cost of that is, you know, just, you know, wasn't plausible. Also, at that time, I'd say that, you know, the church is pushed back under the Religious Freedom Act and said, you can't regulate us anyway, and we have 35 kids with a sleepover, you know, all the time in our church gym, and no one comes and says you can't have 30 kids, you know, on a lock-in. And so that's why we went back and forth, and then we finally settled on 15 because family promise said, we'll never have more than 15 because we only can afford one van. And the city said, okay, well, we'll live with 15, and we settled on 15.
You know, there's been a recent discussion of this issue in Lenexa, where the, I think it's the Universalist, Unitarian Universalist Church, I think sued the city of Lenexa on this very issue. So I'd be interested in getting information about what has transpired with that situation as we look at our own. Because I think in Lenexa, there was no by right allowance where we have that here in Lawrence.
I think another thing that we have to consider when we're looking at those numbers, though, particularly if we're looking at a ratio of volunteers to individuals there, is the recommendations that we received from the consultant on staffing levels that would be responsible at the shelter, and particularly if we're talking about folks who have been banned from the shelter for one reason or another, whether that was behavioral, mental health, substance use, and abuse, we have to be cognizant of that and safety within that, or we have to say, it's not our liability, you're taking that on, and I'm not wholly comfortable with that.
This is where the conversation really needs to be productive among all the party.
Mm-hmm. I agree. Yeah, I think having those collaborative conversations is going to be important. I also think that, I agree that camping is a pretty low bar. I also know that unless our community, our state, our nation, globally, were taking on this issue, it is always going to be a problem. If we fix the issue of homelessness in Lawrence, that doesn't impact the rest of the state, and there are still going to be folks experiencing this, who are accessing this community because we care, which is great. I'm not saying that that's a bad thing, but I do think that we need to address camping as part of that conversation. But I do think that we need to address camping as part of that conversation, not as a solution, but as a last resort. I know I've talked about this every time that we've discussed this issue and I think part of the conversation too that we have with stakeholders in this issue is the role not only of like the city and of our nonprofit organizations and of folks who are experiencing houselessness and with advocates on behalf of those folks, but what is the role in each part of this? And where do we prioritize our resources in each part of this, looking at primary prevention, preventing this from happening in the first place? And when we look at those primary issues, they impact so many other areas and so many other nonprofit organizations and so many other social issues that affect our community, but it is not intervention. Where do we play a role in intervention? What is our role in that? That is the funding the shelter. That is talking about camping. That is talking about all of those issues that we're essentially talking about tonight is that intervention piece. And then tertiary prevention is another area that goes largely ignored, which is addressing, once we have a solution for folks, especially if we move toward the housing first model, which Renee has clearly stated is a priority for her organization, how do we prevent this from happening again? Where is our role in that? Where should most of our dollars be going in that? And that, to me, I think is the heart of that conversation. And I think that when this was implemented, we were creating ordinances within systems that we have. We're having people conform to the systems that we have. And the system that we relied on in that instance was the criminal justice system or the criminal legal system. And so, that was, that was where the solution lay, lie? Oh, sorry, I was an English major. But we really need to shape our systems to conform to the needs of our residents. And so, how do we create a real process for addressing this, you know, removing that from the criminal legal system and putting it into something that is going to assist this big picture conversation, this big picture impact, this big picture goal that we have to address this issue and utilizing the criminal legal system as a last resort in those instances? So, I completely support creating that community model. I think the question sitting before us tonight then is what do we do with these ordinances that are sitting here as they are today? What are next steps in regard to that as we also take on that bigger picture conversation?
You know, I do agree, you were talking about the ordinances and how we've implemented them and it seems to me most ordinances are made as a reactive process versus a proactive process. And that's maybe where we need to flip this whole idea is that, is to look at it more proactively and come up with some sort of system model, discussion, task, whatever, you know, whatever we think we want to do and start to look at this proactively versus the typical ordinance of being reactive.
I would, did you want to go? I mean, I would, on the camping ordinance, I mean, clearly the Ninth Circuit, Martin versus Boise, doesn't technically apply to us because we're the Tenth Circuit and then the Ninth Circuit. But assuming you believe that is good law or you believe that it's persuasive law, you know, that law would say if we don't have room, we can't, you know, we can't ball camping. If we don't have room in our shelters, we can't ball camping. We clearly don't have room in our shelters. And so, you know, regardless, if you repeal it outright and say, "We just don't have it on the books," or if you say, "It's on the books, but it's not going to be enforced when we don't have room in the shelter pursuant to the Boise case," either way, you're not enforcing it if you're going to follow that case law or you challenge the case law.
So, the option would be to repeal it or modify it in that instance?
Yeah.
I think that...
This is where I think we need to have more advice from staff, frankly. I mean, I think that, you know, we can set some direction tonight for them to say, you know, "Let's take another look at that ordinance and, you know, what suggestions do you have? What recommendations do you have based on the research that you're doing?"
Well, we have quite a few examples here they gave us if modification is what we want direction on. We mentioned some of them. If there's no room in the shelter, I think there was one that said you could camp within a quarter mile of the shelter. It was very specific. I hate to just throw it back to staff and not give them some kind of direction.
I think we've actually given some significant direction this evening already.
Pretty macro direction.
Yeah.
How much in the weeds do you want to get?
I don't know.
Well, I think that this is, again, it's an extended conversation. We need to be prepared for that.
So, in regard to the illegal camping and aggressive panhandling, do we want to give any specific direction for what staff should bring back to us? I can give my opinion. So, in regard to the aggressive panhandling ordinance, given the apparent obsolete nature of that, I think that, does ours address? Yes, it does address location. I think that we should consider removing it from the criminal code and find an alternative means, but I think that's a pretty big change. So, for example, referring to a program, whether that's through the shelter or some other case management opportunity for those individuals or, you know, what is going to address the issue around camping and what we call aggressive panhandling? In regard to the camping, I would love to see a designated area in which folks would be permitted to be, where there would be some sort of amenity opportunities such as fire for warmth, potentially electric hookup of some sort with a capacity and some sort of permitting, but not costly, way of accessing that. Because again, that should be an opportunity to have the last resort. So, that's kind of, kind of where my mind is on those things.
I just, I think what I would add, I don't disagree, but I would want, I think what I would want to be careful of is not just making one designated area if that was the direction we wanted to go. I wouldn't want it to seem that we were inadvertently or intentionally, I don't know, creating Hoovervilles or, and then the other consideration I would just want us to have is how practically staff or Parks and Rec or whoever would be able to take care of those Just practical concerns.
Yeah.
And safety, safety, of course.
And cost, cost weight is, you know, the cost of cleaning up, which we heard was costly, versus the cost of saying, "This is the space." So, maybe it's not, "This is the specific space," but here are where it's not.
Well, kind of that's what we have, right? We have this section that's, was it AD? That's very specifically CD, thank you, very specifically, although we don't have other designated camping areas.
Yeah. Does that seem like the direction that other commissioners would be interested in seeing that conversation move?
You know, I think we can always just look at what's presented for sure. I'm just not for sure if that's a route we want to go because I know, just, you know, Derek spoke earlier about the issue of trying to get water to any, any of these sites is pretty difficult. I mean, I'd be more than one to look at whatever they have to offer, but I'm a little, I don't think I'm ready to make a decision tonight that, you know, we want to repeal anything at this point. I think we need much more information.
Yeah, again, I'm a, I'm a much more optimistic guy. I mean, I would rather see that, see that if we had, if we had a camping, you know, if you follow the Ninth Circuit case and say, "Until you have the room, you can't enforce it." Well, what does that do? That forces us to work together collectively to find a way to make that happen so we're not at that point. And if we're at that point, well, then we have to deal with that consequence and the city has to deal with that consequence and we, that forces us to get to a better, get to a better place. So, I mean, I think you could spend, I mean, there's lots of variations there and there's a lot of, you know, ways you can say, "Well, you can camp here, you can't camp there, you can do this, you can do that." I think we want to move completely away from that. I do agree that in the short run, you know, we can't, you know, you can't wave magic wand and have it all. And so, people still might be camping, but hey, if, if, if we don't, if we can't, if we can't handle it until we do, well, then you can't enforce it.
Not enough direction for y'all?
Well, no, but you're struggling with it and because it's complicated. And this reflects similar conversations the staff has had in trying to figure out, "What do we recommend?" And some of the, some of the things that we've done to reduce the enforcement and not kind of carry these things out that I'd reported on earlier were, came out of those conversations. We're trying to figure out, "What can we do but stay within the bounds and react to this and make things better for people in the interim until we figure out some of these longer term, more proactive solutions?" So, we can, we can bubble up some stuff that we talked about. We also will absolutely engage with our community partners. I mean, we have some expertise, quite a bit of it in this community. We need to engage in that and I think they will help us develop relevant, short-term solutions as we're moving towards this more comprehensive approach as a community. And also, I am intrigued by models and best practices that are working well. So, Rockford's been mentioned a number of times. That had been, we talked about that before, so I'm interested in looking at what those models are too. We've already done some investigation of other things that are working in other states. So, it's just a matter of us trying to decide, "How do we wade into it?" And you're kind of struggling with it reflects that it's just not clear and easy. I think the here and now and what we tried to queue up is, "How do we want to address these two ordinances that are on place or three if you include the occupancy for churches?" Those are three where if I'm hearing from you, you want to see us really pull back from those and understand the cause and effect of those. I think we can do that for you and then you're going to have to react to what we give you whenever we bring it to you. The more robust and proactive way that we approach this, we're anxious to try and engage in too, if that's your direction. Of course, there are always budget implications and how do we work on getting these resources gathered and who are our partner agencies? So, we're anxious to do that work too, but I loved hearing that it is a strategic planning issue. And when we hear from the community that this is something that's important, then we'll, we'll know how to prioritize it.
That's a very succinct description of about half an hour of conversations.
I was feeling a landing over here.
I get the big bucks.
I did have, you said something about pulling back on the ordinance. Are you, are you indicating that you're to repeal it? Is that what you're going to?
Well, I will certainly give you the cause and effect of repealing the ordinance. You've heard a number of people talk about that right now. I think there are some, I read all of the 2005 minutes and I thought those were expressive of a balance that was trying to be struck.
Yeah.
There were 75, there were 75 complaints from citizens that we responded to related to that ordinance, even though we didn't cite it, understand that there's that, that's a population or constituency in our community that felt unsafe or concerned about that and we just don't want to miss them in this mix either. So, there's a cause and effect of almost everything that we do, but we're certainly hearing that there's, you know, there's something happening with our community that we need to address.
Yep.
So, I'll give you the cause and effect of some of these different things, including pulling all the way back and then showing some forbearance and some more moderate steps in keeping the most severe effects of some of these things in place maybe, but making sure that there's kind of a signal of community trust in some of the people that could be affected by this. We heard that in the last conversation we had, that signaling our trust by showing restraint within policy is also valuable. And if there's some people feeling unsafe or insecure that they're, that we're abusing the policies, then these may be some steps that we can help to develop as well.
I am interested in the decriminalization piece of that. I think that though what we've heard, and I don't know the extent to which those instances have been reported and so that we can speak to them factually, but if most of the negative experiences that people seem to be having is with interaction, not so much in the enforcement or ticketing versus charging, is there a distinction there? Okay. And so, some of those interactions seem to be pretty negative according to what we've been told. And so, how can we also work to have a broader understanding? I know Derek mentioned that he was talking to his staff about how those interactions occur. There you are. And I know the police department has done a lot of work on that, having dated someone who worked at the library, like the interactions with law enforcement have significantly changed in when those calls are made. And so, making sure that we're also making progress in those areas as well would be really useful and that's, that's on the city side of things.
I may always do this, what kind of timeline do we want to expect? I think it's reasonable to ask that on any one of these items. They may take a different amount of research, of course.
Totally reasonable question.
Well, the interim solutions, I mean, working up ordinances, doing cause and effect of maybe two or three options on each of those two, including full repeal. We'd want to be comprehensive and show you, "These are the causes and effect." 30 days is my popular answer on these things, but...
Anybody cringing back behind me?
I hear about it Wednesday morning.
I think at the very least, we should get a report as to where you're at with it because I sure don't want to shortchange the research that's going to be needed to make sure this is done in a, in a proper manner.
So, you're asking for a status report rather than a full-blown?
A full-blown report would be the best.
Right.
My inclination is to do a short-term kind of triage of these three ordinances and what your cause and effect would be and not, and then start the process of the more proactive strategic approach of this. So, I still think a lot of the research is done here and we're talking about modification of an exist, of these three existing ordinances. I still think with the 30 days, we can give you some, some solutions. It may still be that you throw it back at us, but I still think the 30 days is going to be adequate.
Okay, so we have two meetings in March, is that right?
Yep.
We don't have three?
So, would this be the second meeting in March then?
Okay.
Yes, or the first, the work session.
Well, I don't believe there's a, there's no, there's only two meetings. We have, we have, the work session's been canceled. have, the work session's been canceled, so, I mean...
Craig and I would have been the only ones who showed up.
Pardon?
Craig and I would have been the only ones.
Well, I mean, I could be wrong. I'm just doing this from memory.
The third and the seventeenth are our meetings, the tenth is the spring break.
So, I mean, I would say the seventeenth is that...
Fine.
Sorry?
So...
Well, if we get into April, I mean, it's, again, warming up, but that, that's what we're facing.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, seventeenth?
We'll, we'll do the best we can for the seventeenth, and you'll at least have what, everything that we think of at that point.
That would be good. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's take a five-minute break. I'm sorry. And then, then we'll finish up. You did not oppose us moving that, so thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners, Porter Arneal, Director of Communications and Creative Resources, I am here to give a presentation on the cultural plan update from building on Lawrence's creative capital, a citywide cultural plan. So I was going to start with some background. Back in April 2013, the Cultural District Task Force was established by the City Commission, and in December of 2013, they delivered their report, which included nine recommendations. I have them listed here, and you can see that number two was a cultural plan. These are the other nine items that were there. So, the city then was awarded a grant from the Kansas Creative Arts Industries Commission, and through an RFQ process, contracted with Christine Harris of Christine Harris Connections, and Tom Borup of Creative Community Builders, to work with a steering committee to facilitate community engagement meetings and develop, develop the cultural plan. Steering Committee was assembled. The primary goals of this committee were to identify cultural assets, cultural priorities, strategies to enhance creative sector, and recommendations for infrastructure and other initiatives. This all commenced in February 2015, and this process aspect of it concluded in July of 2015. One thing that came out of this, and actually I've heard Craig reference this in his Hundred Days, is, and this was one, one bit of information from their extensive survey, but based on research conducted for the citywide cultural plan, we know that whether people participate or not, Lawrenceans consider arts and culture to be important to our community. And that came out in multiple ways. I think Craig has referenced that, he's heard that, and I heard it when I arrived here in 2015. So that's certainly something that everybody's aware of, and you can see it here. None of these things that were listed were below a 2.5, so, just good to be reminded of that, I think, from time to time. The vision of the plan was part of the framework. Lawrence is nationally recognized for its collaborative spirit that boldly propels the community to reach its potential through a focus on creativity for the greater good. And the mission of this citywide plan is to engage the Lawrence community in expressing its collective creative capacity in order to support and sustain a vibrant and robust community. There's two sections to this plan. There's an A and a B. A is community outcomes, and under A, there are five directives: Balance the Local, Embrace All, Celebrate Community, Build Places Together, Build and Market Creative Brand, and Promote Lifelong Learning. And B is Getting the Work Done, which articulates both the structure and tactical steps to help deliver, sustain, and continually improve the community outcomes of the strategic plan for creative Lawrence, which is Strengthen the Network, Mind the Gaps, and Form the Future. Just so people understand, these are broken out in much more detail in the actual cultural plan. I'll talk a little bit more about the implementation matrices, which, here they are. So there are nine pages related to those topics that I just shared. Each of those contain different directives based on information that was gleaned by the consultant team. One thing about this plan that I think is important, having come in 2015, when this was just being finished, is that it's not owned by the city proper. It really is meant to be a community plan, and anybody can have access to this. I've delivered it at numerous meetings, so really trying to encourage people, take this plan, look at it, look at the matrix in the back, see what fits for you. There's probably things you're already doing, and use that to bolster what you're doing in various ways, including maybe grants with the Kansas Creative Arts Industries Commission, or something along those lines, or with the Cultural Arts Commission. So those things are there. Basically, you have the implementation matrix, which summarizes the goals and strategies and actions, along with who's responsible, timeline, and resource implications. Culture of Creative Asset Inventory, I have to give great credit here to numerous people in the community, Dave Lahnstein and others, working with the cultural, what's the, sorry, it's been a long time, cultural group that he was heading up for a long time, and Nick, oh goodness.
It's late.
It is late. Nick Carswell did a great job, actually created a webpage. I give him a lot of credit. So we actually have a lot of this information assembled. We haven't been able to do much with it, but it is there and available to us. And then, what is the ongoing city role as convenor and also tracking metrics? And what we did immediately was develop the one-stop shopping webpage, again, to make this as available as possible to the community. We presented the cultural plan to several community groups, and we identified efforts already underway. So we looked for, where is this already happening in the community, and identifying those things. Since I arrived in 2015, one thing I was very interested in was sort of looking at some of the baseline opportunities. This was called out in A4, which is Build a Market and Create a Brand, Promote Cultural Creative Tourism. We have the TGT Grant Program, which is being developed when I arrived. We wanted to have that cultural voice on that commission, which we do have, which I think is a really important thing. Help creative artists and organizations more expertly grow their markets. One thing we realized, we had Final Fridays. It was very successful on its own, but we weren't able to market it to the level that Explorer Lawrence could. They have the tools in place to really market this much more broadly and make it more of a destination opportunity. So we did work with them and pass that over to them, and they've been doing it for the last three years now, very successfully. And we appreciate that that gives us data that we can track as well. And then, last but not least, measure and articulate the scope, scale, and impact of the creative economy. I give credit to Eric Kirkendall, who did an economic development, or an economic impact report based on Americans for the Arts related to Final Fridays, but he did that without a direct sort of interaction in the community with Americans for the Arts. We had the opportunity to actually participate directly in this national study for Lawrence and Douglas County Arts and Economic Prosperity V. We took a lead on this study in this area and coordinated things locally with the city and the county, required the collection of financial and programming information from 23 arts and culture organizations located in Lawrence. I actually talked to Eric today. When he did the study, I think there were four arts and culture organizations, so things have definitely grown. Nineteen here and four in Douglas County, as well as, we conducted 1,200 audience intercept surveys from people who attended arts and culture events in 2016. So with this, we derived this information. You have the report there. It's available on the website. Lawrence and Douglas County Arts and Culture nonprofits generate $30.8 million in economic activity each year. They support 1,061 full-time equivalent jobs. They generate $19.3 million in resident household income. They generate $2.8 million for local and state government. That's spelled out in more detail there, for local and state. And then, on average, each arts patron who visits our community for an arts-related event spends $24.25 beyond admission costs. So this is in addition to ticket costs. And that equates to $20.66 for a resident and $36.46 for a non-resident, so bringing people from outside is certainly beneficial to our community.
This is per year? This is per year?
That was per year, yes. And actually, I think that, working with Explorer Lawrence, we've discovered that these numbers are pretty closely aligned. So I think there's, we have faith in the, than the accuracy of these numbers. Other accomplishments related to this is integrating the cultural plan. The cultural plan is referenced in chapter seven of the, the chapter title is Community Resources, in Plan 2040. So I know that Jeff actually worked on that with Amy and Scott at the time, and that's part of their plan. And then the cultural plan is also one of several plans referenced to help inform the downtown master plan. So the plan is actually being implemented and used by various agencies related to the city at this point. Other accomplishments related to the plan, we've developed Culture Chat. It's been a wax-and-wane kind of situation, but it's been good. We've seen sort of fertilizing and seed, seeds being planted in the community and people doing things. We're trying to expand that. We actually met last night, the committee. We're looking at aligning with Final Fridays, perhaps, and having some, some aspect where we can sit and glean people who are actually participating in arts and culture activities. We've collaborated with the Sustainability Office and the Food Policy Council to cross-pollinate. And this year, that evolved into a collaboration between the Outdoor Downtown Sculpture Exhibition and the Common Ground Program. So I'm working directly with Jasmine. We're looking at having artists basically do some sort of art in the, in the common ground gardens. It may be sculptural, it may be performative, we don't know, so we'll see what happens out of that. And then, the Lawrence Cultural Arts Commission was very involved in the Loop at one time, and so they developed and implemented Chalk the Loop, which was a fun event around the entire Loop, where people went with chalk and drew pictures and that kind of thing, and engaged with people using the Loop. This was in collaboration with Parks and Recreation, Friends of Lawrence Areas Trails, and the Spencer Museum of Art to help promote the Loop. And that's it. Happy to answer questions.
Questions, Porter?
No, thank you very much for doing this. Appreciate it.
You're welcome, yeah.
Thank you.
I, I appreciate the timing of this, as we talk about the strategic plan, and yet another element that certainly has some viability to be in as part of the plan.
Obviously, I know you originally hired us the Director of Arts and Culture, and but now, what, I mean, break down your time. How much do you spend on communications? How much do you spend on arts and culture?
I would, I would say that communications takes up the, the lion's share of my time.
Yeah.
But, you know, I'm still the liaison for the Art, Art Commission and Sister Cities, so. I'm managing both, implementing the programs related.
You're also the...
Explorer Lawrence.
Explorer Lawrence, DMI, right?
Destination, destination management type things, and talking to Michael about that, yeah. Yeah. Never bored.
Thank you very much, Porter.
Thank you.
That is it.
Public comment? Maybe Ron wants to say something?
Yeah, I'm sorry. So sorry. Public comment.
Ron, you've been sitting here the whole time. You gonna say something? No. Now we're done.
All right. Thank you very much. Have a great night. Are you going to say something or not?
Come on up.
We can pause. We'll give you time.
My name's Ron Geishus, and I'm a resident here of Lawrence and a big supporter of the arts. I would only encourage you to maybe look at the model you've talked about for social services, funding, coming up with a strategic plan. You know, we, we've got a strategic cultural plan now. Maybe it would be a good exercise to do something similar for your cultural and artistic investments in the community. Pull all of those together so you can see what the number is, and start to line up those resources against your cultural plan. See where you're spending your time, your resources. Do a little bit of a gap analysis. What part of this plan are we not making movement on? What parts of it are we making progress on? In the, the report, tonight's a good report, tells you a lot what city staff's involved in. But as, as Porter pointed out, the actual implementation, the delivery of this cultural plan is really dependent upon the acts of a lot of not-for-profit organizations, and for-profit galleries, and a number of other stakeholders in the community. And it'd be good to see an overview, maybe, of what all of them are doing in support of the cultural plan as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay. Thank you very much. Have a good night.